This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, eight oh one. We are beginning the meeting of the amended notice of meeting of the Rome City Council, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do we have a invocation? If we do have a quorum, um, do we have an invocation? Unless someone from council or one of the department heads would like to give an invocation? Would you? Excellent, thank you.
Lord Jesus, thank you for this glorious day. Be with us today as we gather to leave this city. Allow us to treat each other how we would have others treat ourselves, regardless of how they treat us. Be with the ill and the lonely, be with the citizens of this town. In Jesus' name I pray this thing.
I blew the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the great heath of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. The text is black. That's it. Texas. I'm big.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Okay, for a regular agenda, we are going to combine one through seven for presentation from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. We are going to get started this morning, and I appreciate you all gathering on a Saturday morning very early for us to have this conversation. I do understand that Mr. Johnson will be here a little bit later. Mr. Schumake, we know that he is leading the honor guard for the fallen marine for Northwest ISD, and I'm unaware of where Mayor Mitchell is for today's conversation. But I do think that we can accomplish a lot, and today's discussion is meant to be more give and take between you all and staff from the standpoint of the decisions that have to be made. So please stop us at any time during the discussion. You do have the slide deck in front of you. You do have some other paperwork that we will reference later on in today's conversation, and so it is informal. It will be, as I said, very give and take, and I have all the department heads assembled if you have questions relative to. Unfortunately, most of our discussion today will be the Mr. Dominguez show because we are going to center on things that have to do with water and wastewater, and he has been an invaluable resource to me in putting together this information. So I would like to say thank you, sir, for all of your extra and hard work, especially the pictures as you see this going through. So we have a lot of information to cover today, so let's settle in and get to this. If it seems redundant, some of this is, as you will recall, the December fourteenth meeting didn't record due to technical difficulties, so I have included some of the slides from that deck because it not only talks about the general condition of our water and wastewater system, but it also answers the question of what happened when we increased the sewer rates in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, somewhere in there, that should have given us some capacity to issue debt. I have seen that posted on social media, and it's a valid question that our residents have that we need to be able to answer. So I believe we have that information for you today. The goal of today's discussion is to give you a very good overview of where the water, the wastewater sits, as well as several of the other systems that exist within the city of Rome, because we often forget that we have a park system and we have facilities that we need to deal with, and we have storm drainage that needs to be tended to. We've got a plethora of things that go into the composition and the makeup of this city, and we have to consider it in its totality. We had a capital improvement plan that was done in two thousand and sixteen by Jacob and Martin, that who was our engineer at the time, that included mapping. It was very comprehensive from the standpoint of the information they gave. I have included it in your slide deck, however, it's now dated. We also had an update to that in the early two thousand and twenties by Kim Lee Horn, who is our current engineer, and I have obtained some new information from Kim Lee Horn as it relates to the costs for replacement on some of our assets. So we'll go ahead and kick this off. Shayna is going to run the slide deck for me as we go through, so if we need to go forward or backward, we can certainly do that. If you want to follow along in your printed copy, because some of the photos may be difficult for you to see, it also allows you to take some notes. We are on slide number two that talks about the system-wide overview of everything that is involved within our organization, because it's not only the physical assets that deal with all of those systems therein, but we also have the financial position of the city to consider. As you will recall from our audit in two thousand and twenty-two, we did have an excess of revenue over expenditures, so there is some cash reserves that can be utilized for some of these projects as we are going through this discussion. But I think you will also see that there is a tremendous list of equipment, supplies, and projects that could be cash funded as well. So we'll need to make a decision through that lens as we have our discussions. So what you may not think about on a daily basis is we're not in a direct service delivery for a lot of our services that we provide. For instance, trash and recycling, street repair and maintenance, we don't do that ourselves generally. We have a third-party contractor that comes in and handles our trash service, our garbage collection, et cetera. We also have, we would contract out for a lot of our street repair and maintenance. We have a very fine public works department, but there's only four of them, and their expertise lies mainly in water and wastewater, which is where we have focused our time over the past several years. And so if we make any decision to bring in or complete some of the road repairs that you will see are desperately needed, we will either have to hire that out, or council will have to make a decision to expand the public works department. At this point, since we are still a fledgling city and coming up, it would be my recommendation to you that we outsource that to a third party and let Mr. Dominguez oversee it. To put on full-time staff members for that use at this time is probably not a good use of our funds and may use up some capacity that we have for other things as we go along. Some of the services that we do provide directly, though, are public safety, the utility services, the administration and the governance piece of what you do as it relates to finance and municipal court and utility billing. And you will see on that slide that you have before you that we have the water and wastewater system, public facilities, which you all, not you all necessarily, but the council in the past has discussed many times, even bonds put forward to fix the facilities that we are in that did not pass through election. We have a park system, which is more than just the Veterans Park and the Family Park over by Crown Point. We have some additional land that will eventually evolve out into a park system. We have the roadway system. We've had some folks reach out to me in my tenure in Rome that have discussed the state of the roads, and so that's something we will eventually have to look at. But we also have city, state, and county roads that exist within Rome, which has caused some confusion. We've talked about that as recently as our last meeting from the standpoint of a resident who wrote in and wanted to see what council could do about some certain roadways, and it's just out of our control because those are state roadways. We have storm drainage. We have a list of equipment that's needed in each and every department. We have personnel. I have given you a list or a look at current and future personnel as it goes through this conversation. There may be on the future some changes as we ebb and flow with the growth. And then we have an overview of our financial position from the standpoint of what we learned from our audit from FY twenty-two. So if we'll turn to the next slide, please, ma'am. Rome is very fortunate, as we discussed at our December meeting, to have had many studies done to help us with this particular process. As you can see, we had the capital improvement plan that I mentioned to you. We also have a current drought contingency plan that was put out in two thousand and nineteen. We have a water and wastewater impact fee study that was done in two thousand and twenty, and then we have a long-term water supply study that was also done in two thousand and twenty by Kim Lee Horn, our current engineer. We have another water and wastewater rate study in two thousand and twenty-one. We have another water system master plan in nineteen and twenty, and on down the list as you can see. The interesting thing about these reports is it does provide us a great history of where our water and sewer systems have come from as it relates to this portion of our service delivery. But I think you're going to see that a lot of the recommendations that have been implemented in these plans have not been put into place, and that's where, in my opinion, as someone who's been in this profession for twenty-seven years, we've got to make some headway. We have a very, very long list of things that need to be done. We have three major projects that I know of for sure that need to be tended to, that I will make recommendations to you on as we go through today. But we have things that will help make Rome a better city for the residents that live here, both current and future. So when you look at our water system assets, we're going to jump right into the water system itself. As I discussed with you the last time, from one of the CIP documents that we had from Jacob Martin, our system was likely constructed in the nineteen forties and fifties. So we're coming up pretty quickly on a hundred years on that system. So we do have some, nineteen ninety-one, we had some line upgrades that were handled in certain areas just to deal with some failures that we have had at that time, but we have not invested in that system in a significant manner since then. As you know, we have seventeen and a half miles of supply and distribution line. We have approximately six hundred and sixty connections to our water system, and as we've discussed before, our current loss rate of water is nineteen percent. And what you may recall as well is that we've discussed the fact that Mr. Dominguez would like to see that down closer to four or five, and so that is something that we will be working toward in the future to identify where we're losing that water. He has provided some information, and I'm sure he can weigh in on this as well, but when you have the water main break, similar to what we had over in Crown Point on Troxell a few weeks ago, that is a water loss incident that we don't have a way to meter per se, and so it's basically part of that nineteen percent. When we have leaks at the current ground storage tanks that we're going to show you some photos of as we move forward today, that also adds to that nineteen percent. When we have fire departments that come over as a result of mutual aid, if they don't have a meter and they take water from the hydrant, that's also shown in the loss category. It's a very necessary part of providing services to our residents, so it's not something that we can really do anything about, but that does add to the nineteen percent. We also have unaccounted-for household leaks. We have irrigation system leaks for people who have that within their homes. We also have meter malfunctions and inaccuracies that just in general comprise that nineteen percent. If you wanted to try and translate that into a dollar amount, at least the last time we looked at it, the nineteen percent equates to about a hundred thousand dollars out of utility fund each year. Okay? As you also know, our current water source is the Walnut Creek Special Utility District, and you've heard me mention multiple times that we get about ninety-five percent of our water from them. Most of that is due to the fact that our current wells are not pulling enough gallons per minute to keep up with the demand that we have within Rome, as well as we have some wells that are in need of some repair in order to be at their maximum capacity, if you will. For instance, we have one well that we'll talk about later that's drawing about ten gallons a minute that could be at forty if we made some minor repairs to the system itself. So here's where we start launching off into some of the photos that we've not had for you in the past, and it's difficult, and since council cannot just gather necessarily in a big group and go around to our sites, we thought that we would provide you with an overview and a picture of some of the things that the public work staff sees and has been talking about for the past several years. We have, through the recent audit of our system, you know, we have the pump stations, the ground storage tanks, we have wells, et cetera, and all of that has to do with providing safe drinking water to the residents of Rome. As you see here in this picture, the Bobo Pump Station is our main flow of water from Walnut Creek. This is a four hundred thousand gallon tank. Is that correct? Yes, making sure I have them lined up properly, and it is at least twenty years old. This tank was given to us by Walnut Creek, and we paid a company to move it on site, but we do not know how long it had been in service with Walnut Creek prior to our receiving it. It did save us a considerable amount of money, that donation from their organization to ours, so we are grateful to have had it, but we do need to do some repairs on this particular tank, as you'll see, as we, not just yet, Shayna, but as we move into the next slide. I did find the documentation where we had paid the company to move it on site. It's interesting, we have the luxury of having had staff that knows quite a bit of history about it, and apparently when this tank was put in place, they erected the walls and a big windstorm came through, and they didn't have the top on, and all the walls blew into the center, and so they had to redo it all and start again. So that would be just kind of an interesting trivia question for some of our water systems. But as you see, Shayna, if you'll advance, this is the inside of the Bobo tank, and it has a considerable amount of rust that has occurred in the lid, if you will, for lack of a better term, the structure that sits on the top to keep the rainwater from coming in. You will also notice in the upper left-hand photo, there is an arrow pointing to a current hole that exists in the top of that tank, and we need to allocate some funds and/or we need to make some decisions toward repair. You will see that the next photo down in the right from, that has the open manhole, if you will, that is how you access the tank in and out, and then those other photos are just other areas and other directions that show the rust that has accumulated that comes as a result of the chlorine, because the chlorine that we have to use to treat the water is extremely corrosive, and you really, you really need to be doing routine maintenance, preventative maintenance on these systems in order for them to stay in their best shape. I will tell you that we recently obtained pricing to replace the tank completely. It is eight dollars a gallon, per gallon.
A gallon.
We really cannot afford to replace that tank, so we have to do some repairs on these. The costs of things have gone up exponentially, of course, since this was installed twenty or twenty-five years ago for us, and as I mentioned, we don't know the actual age of the tank. It is still in functioning condition. I don't want you to think it's not, but it does need some assistance, as you can see. So bear with us as we go through the slideshow, because I think staff can sit here and talk to you all day about the conditions, and we can try and explain it with words, but a picture will do a considerable amount to give you a visual of what staff are seeing within our system. So moving ahead, this is again our Bobo Pump Station as it relates to the exterior part of the, what I would affectionately call the wellhouse, because that's kind of the nomenclature that I understand, but that is what contains all the pump station pumps. You will see the blue tank, or what are those, Jesus? Those are piping, the pipings?
The piping.
That brings in all the water through Walnut Creek and pushes it out through our system. Do you have anything that you want to add on Bobo before we move forward?
On the far-right picture, the HVAC unit, it's very, you've got to have AC in it in there because the pumps get so hot in the summer, and that has not been working properly the last, it went out of service for three years, and previously they didn't want to fix it. I spent a little bit of money to try to just get it up and running, but it does need to be replaced at any moment. It could just stop working. And then the, do we want to get on the emergency generator right here? I mean, it's a, it's a critical part of the infrastructure, so we're preparing for emergency preparedness plan for the state, and they require us to have a backup generator. From my understanding, they talked about this when the former director was here, but nothing was purchased, and the state has came back since we filled out paperwork saying we're going to buy it, and we never did. So we're in a, in a spot where Bobo Pump Station and thirty-four thirty-three and the wells need generators. I got a quote, it's just a rough number, it's about a hundred thousand dollars per generator. You need two big ones, one at thirty-four thirty-three and one at Bobo to move water from Walnut Creek, and then your wells would be just a portable generator, like on a trailer. It's about forty-five thousand dollars, fifty thousand, and each site needs a transfer switch. So each side is ten thousand dollars. You really just need one generator to cover the state plant, but just keep in mind, only one generator runs one wellhouse at a time, so our wells don't do any damage towards our demand, so really the, the most critical factor is going to be Bobo and thirty-four thirty-three.
And just so you all are aware, I see you're taking notes, which is excellent. I do have slides down in this presentation that summarizes all the costs so that you're not trying to track them all on a back of a napkin as we go through today, so just bear with us. It's, it's a lengthy slide, but I think it does tell the, it's a very comprehensive story of where our water and sewer system and other systems, the state of them currently, and as we do have a very active residency who wants to be informed about these things, I think the slide deck will be beneficial for them so they can see it as well, because there's been some misinformation that has been circulated as it relates to the needs of the community, and we don't gain anything by providing false information. This is your city. You all live here. It's our responsibility to be stewards of it so that you can enjoy your living here. It doesn't profit us to tell you something that's incorrect or to hide something or to overinflate something, if you will. So we're trying to provide a, just a baseline of information so that you, as council members, can make an informed decision, and if we decide to move forward with these projects and put it out to the residency for a vote, as we discussed at our meeting on Thursday, that they then can also have the same information to make an informed decision. You have hundreds of millions of dollars worth of infrastructure that will crumble eventually, and you're starting to see it. If we continue to do what I have heard folks say is put off deferred maintenance, eventually we will have no systems, and you won't be able to get water out of the tap and flush your toilet, for lack of a better terminology. So just ask questions as we go through. Be mindful that this is a system-wide approach, and we're not going to be able to do everything. We're going to have to prioritize and come forward from there as to what's most important from the standpoint of, of the community. All right, ma'am, would you please move forward to the next slide? So the FM thirty-four thirty-three pump station itself, it gets its name from the road that it's located on. It appears to have been brought online in approximately two thousand and two, also making this system and this tank more than twenty years old. This one, from talking to staff members, this one is in much better shape than the Bobo tank. It needs minor rehab and repairs. We haven't found any records to say exactly when that was installed as of yet. We are still scanning documents, so as we continue to clean out and organize our records, we may eventually find those, but there hasn't been a whole lot of maintenance done at this site either. Shayna, would you advance that for me, ma'am? Jesus, would you like to talk to this?
Yes, so this is a, I guess what you would say, more, what a, a cheaper version of a pump room. You know, this is just to get the, the basic needs of it. Two pumps, and we plug in heaters in the, in the wintertime, and it doesn't have any AC, so it does get really hot in there. It does work, I mean, yeah, but we need to do some upgrades to the pump room itself. The tank itself, it's honestly not in bad shape compared to Bobo, but again, the corrosion of the chlorine, it's twenty years of no maintenance. That's pretty impressive for it to not have very bad damages or, or visual corrosion on this thing. Yeah, there, that compressor in the back.
A trivia of that.
Yeah, so that compressor, there's a big old propane-looking tank, is it in the picture? I don't think it is. It's a hydro pneumatic tank, so what it was is, that's what pressurized the system back before the tower was put online, and so that air compressor is kind of what pushed the water down to keep the pressure going towards the system. Well, they built the pumps around it, and you can't get the compressor out, so.
It's there for a while.
I mean, I could, I guess I could take off this end of the pump, but that's a lot of work for, for a thousand dollars. It's, yeah.
All right, so moving on to the next slide deck, please, ma'am. This is our crown jewel that we have in our water system. We actually have a very beautiful elevated tank that, as you all will know, exists out there on two eighty-seven. This is our only elevated tank. What most council members and community members may not know is that our comprehensive plan actually calls for a total of three of these over the life of the city of Rome. This was actually installed fairly recently compared to some of the other assets that we have. Would you advance for me, please, ma'am? We had an inspection done on this tank in two thousand and eighteen, and you can see the recommendations that were provided to the city at that time. The interior coatings needed to be renovated in six to eight years, exterior four to six. The interior cleaning and condition assessment should come every two years according to their recommendation. It is actually a requirement by TCEQ to do that every five years, which is the schedule that we adhere to, and from talking with staff, I understand that when we have that inspection done, or excuse me, that cleaning and condition assessment every five years, they provide us with a new report, so we're due for that. You will also see that they had a recommendation to repair the hole that existed in the roof of the tank in two thousand and eighteen that has not been repaired. We also needed to move the electrical cable from the dry interior access ladder and install a screen flapper combo at a termination point. None of those repairs have been addressed either from the two thousand and eighteen report. So once we get the new inspection or the cleaning and condition assessment done, I'm sure we will have some additional recommendations from the vendor as it relates to the elevated tank. You will recall that I, Mayor, there's a slide deck for you if you have found your place that may help you for today's conversation. There is, from some of our previous discussions, I was surprised to hear that we were due for as much rehab on this tank as what we are explaining. It just seems like yesterday that it went up, frankly, and time has clipped on pretty good. Shayna, would you advance, please? So you're looking here at the interior of this tank. I will let Mr. Dominguez talk to some of this.
So what you're seeing is, of course, corrosion from the chlorine, what needs to be done probably ten years ago, but it needed to be sandblasted all the way and then recoded with paint, so the corrosion now really isn't, it's bad, but you don't want it to get out of hand to where you're having to replace sections of the metal. I mean, that's, essentially, you just have a huge leak at the tower, and that's not good because that's our main point of pressure for the entire city, up except to Chisholm, they're on a separate plane, but the, it's past due. I mean, that's the reality of it, and we want to tend to that as quick as possible. The only issue we have come across is, in order to rehab this facility, Bobo and thirty-four thirty-three is, they have to come offline. What backup source do we have? We don't have one. So it is either going to be a engineer that's going to have to come up with setting up, I guess, a temporary ground storage tank with a hydro pneumatic tank like I talked about on the hill to keep us online to move the water, because all this water's coming from Walnut Creek, but that's something we're going to have to figure out what option we're going to take. Bobo did call for a second tank years ago, and we only have one, so maybe that's a route we might want to consider as much water as we draw from Walnut Creek, but that's just different options.
Any questions from council on any of this part of the system? We're about to transition into looking at some of our wells that we have online.
I'm assuming these pictures are from the, they're the top of the tower?
Inside.
Inside, but the top?
Yeah, the hole.
So moving on into part of the system that has to do with the ground storage tanks at our wells, and just to underscore the importance of the wells, when I came to Rome and started talking to Mr. Dominguez about our system, for us to produce water out of the ground, it is exponentially less expensive than buying it from Walnut Creek. So the more that we can pull from our existing wells, the less it costs us to produce it, therefore, the more capacity we have within our utility fund to fund debt and pay for projects. It's kind of a balancing act from the standpoint of what we have to pay Walnut Creek to obtain the water and then what we sell it for, because it has to, has to be sold enough to pay for the original cost and to tend to the system versus what we take out of the ground would give us a little bit of a delta that we could use for projects. So this is why we say the four wells that we have existing in any discussion to draw, to drill any other wells going forward are beneficial to the city through that lens. Now, in all of the conversations that Mr. Loftus and Mayor Mitchell have participated in as it relates to the regional approach, Mrs. King went to one of those, Mrs. Thai has been to several of those, we do have other solutions that we'd like to pursue, but we cannot draw or drill enough wells to replace our sourcing from Walnut Creek. And as you know, our contract with Walnut Creek ends in October of two thousand and twenty-nine. We are currently contracted to receive a thousand and fifty gallons of water per minute from them. We have not been receiving that since June-ish from the standpoint of when we went into the stage three water restrictions, so that's been a challenge for us. stage three water restrictions, so that's been a challenge for us. So balance some of those conversations and the things that we're showing you through that lens, that it is much cheaper for us to rehab our wells and draw from for the utility fund. It does provide us a little bit of cushion if Walnut Creek has some sort of a issue that we could augment our own water, but in talking to our engineer and the folks from Upright Trinity Groundwater Conservation District, we couldn't drill enough wells and have a big enough CCN to provide all of our water to replace Walnut Creek's. And we have a very, very large CCN, it's Certificate of Convenience and Necessity, which allows us to provide the water and the services for that area, but there's a spacing requirement between the wells because if you drill them too close together, you draw down everything and you affect everyone else's wells. So there's, there's a lot of guidelines that go into that. So just keep that in mind as we have the conversation about these. This is actually well number three. What I want to call your attention to is the photo on the left. I don't know how you see it, but that tank is leaning and it is going to fall at some point. The foundation underneath that tank has deteriorated and it is shifting towards the left from where we are sitting now. When you see the picture that says City of Rome, well number three, it looks like it's slightly leaning to the right, but whatever direction you want to see it from, this tank has a problem. It's in fairly good condition otherwise from the standpoint of rust and repairs, but we have got to do something to fix the foundation of this tank or it will fall over and then we will lose any capacity at well number three that we currently have. You will see that it is pumping 40 gallons per minute. That is something that we definitely want to keep online because that is about, it's about the best you're going to get from that well. We have understood that in some areas drilling deeper in some of these locations will put us into an, a salty aquifer and we do not want to do that. So we want to make sure that the current wells we have are drilling, are bringing up decent water for drinking that require less treatment, but we do need to allocate some funds or figure out a path forward to replace or repair this tank, if you will. This is the interior of the wellhouse for ground storage tank number three. You will see that there is a yellow device on the flooring in this photo. This is the one pump that exists there. Each of these tanks or wells ought to have two. You ought to have one as a primary and one as a backup. When this one goes out, well number three will just be offline because we won't have a secondary source from which to keep it moving and running and dependent upon how long it takes to either get a part or get the pump will depend on when it can come back online. You can also see that that is a very, fairly small wellhouse. Staff finds it very difficult to do anything within the confines of that space and would ask if we are going to look at doing some sort of upgrades to the system, that we would expand the footprint of that wellhouse so that they can actually get in there and make minor repairs as needed. You will also see that there's an electrical panel inside that area and when SCADA Phase Number Two comes online, it will need to be put on the outside of this building. So this wellhouse itself is going to need a variety of either expansions and/or repairs and a secondary pump. Does that make sense? I know it's a little messy, but it's kind of a, a good overview. So moving ahead to well number four, we do not know when this well was installed. I haven't found any documentation to that effect yet. It is also currently pumping 40 gallons per minute, but it needs immediate attention. As you can see from the photos, there's a tremendous amount of rust and chlorine deterioration as it relates to this ground storage tank from just the top and looking down into the interior. When you go to the next slide, I'm sad to say that is the inside of that tank. There has been no maintenance done that we can find on this ground storage tank and this is probably the worst that I have seen on any ground storage tank from the standpoint of needing rehab and the rust that exists within the interior of that. So what you're looking at is the roofing of well number four. The water would be down below some of the areas that you're looking, but as the chlorine gas rises out of the water, because we have to have that to treat it, this is where we get the rust. Okay, moving on to well number five. This one also needs some assistance. We found records that showed that this well was installed in 1981. This is the one that's only currently pumping 10 gallons per minute and it could be at 40. So we need to make some repairs on this one as we go through this process. 10 versus 40 may not seem like a lot, but remember that's per minute, that's not per day or per hour, so that can equate to a significant amount of gallons as you multiply that through the entirety of 24 hours in a day. We need to pull the motor and pump and have it replaced at this site. The lid on this one is actually corroded to the point where it is not safe for people to stand on. When we had this tank inspected, the staff were very concerned that the inspectors are going to fall into the tank because you can see from the picture on the right at the bottom that it has corroded through and so we also have a hole in the top of this tank as well. Any questions? The last quote we received to do some repair on this tank was about $25,000, so we would need to get a new quote because it's been a while since we have had that information provided to us. Again, looking at ground storage tank number five, on the left are interior photos of the tank. And Mr. Dominguez, what is that that's sitting outside on the left in the black?
Yes, sir.
That is the actual well going into the ground. Uh, that is, and then the rest was just the interior of the tank. That has all the rust inside and that tank and well four are really similar. They're extremely, the corrosion's just really bad and I'm pretty sure if you jump up there once, you're probably going straight down to the bottom of the tank. So, as it holds, I guess that's, you know, we can keep using it, but the minute there's any, uh, top-up hole big enough to, that we can't patch, we're going to have to put those tanks offline, which will lead us to a deficiency with the state because we've got to provide so much gallons per minute per connection and that would put us either at the threshold or below.
Shayna, would you go to the next slide? This is additional photos of well number five at the interior of the tank. You can see it also has rust and paint rehab that is needed. You'll advance, please ma'am? So this brings us to well number six. The one that exists in the Old Town area. As you will recall, this well is offline. It was actually installed in somewhere between 1999 and 2003, but is offline due to a radon remediation that we have for this wellhead. We did receive a grant, a CDVG grant for $350,000 to help with the cost therein. We received that back in early 2020s, I think. I don't recall the exact date of the grant, however, we expect the bidding to go out in the next 60 to 90 days. The engineer has finished up some of their working and their reporting and are working with TCEQ to do all of the last minute checklist so that we can actually put an ad in the paper and put it out for bid and then it will start moving forward. Do you recall what this one drew when it was online?
Eighty gallons.
So this one is a good well, so it would bring twice as much per minute as the other three wells that we have discussed. So we do want to make sure that we get this one back online. The photo on the left is the current ground storage tank. It will be replaced with one larger one as a result of the grant that we received. One of the things that I would like to talk to council about is the elevated tank that you see on the right is no longer in service. And sometime in the future, as we are doing some branding for the City of Rome and we are looking at what may be a focal point to bring businesses to our city, we should consider or could consider repainting this tank and possibly branding it as Old Town Rome because that lends to the, the small city type, um, Main Street area, if you're wanting to draw some boutique businesses in, that might find that a draw for that area down around in Old Town. So it's something to consider. When I came in, there was some discussion about tearing it down and I asked them, asked the vendor to put a pause on that because I didn't know if council was in favor of keeping it in order to brand the city or not, but once you take away a piece of history like this, you can't get it back. So we put a pause on that particular plan forward. I think that was something that was discussed with the previous director and as Mr. Dominguez and I kind of went through it, we felt like we'd, we'd hang on to it for a little bit and see what council wanted to do as it related to that opportunity to rebrand. So then moving forward with our 2016 capital improvement plan that existed through Jacob Martin, you can see that there are goals and objectives as it relates to water that are listed here. Most of these are standard in cities. You want to make sure that the city's water system is working well and that it is providing clean potable water for anyone who is a customer therein of the system. What is specific to Rome would be the objectives that talk about what we need to do to make sure we meet those goals. So providing documentation of all maintenance and the costs involved throughout any implementation process for any repairs that we make, that is something that we have ongoing. We, as we continue to scan in documents and get it organized in our records repository, we're keeping those records so that we have that history. But you'll see under goal number two, there is one to replace the old and deteriorating lines by 2036. That was, at the time this plan was put together, that was a 20-year view. We haven't made any progress on this, so we're going to have to prioritize some things potentially through the lens of this CIP work that was done by Jacob Martin, the update that we received by Kim Lee Horn and the current conditions that we know that exist within the system. So I listed here not necessarily as a checklist, but more of a be mindful of this conversation. This was something that was identified 20 years ago and we need to make sure, or excuse me, almost 20 years ago, we need to make sure that we're not losing sight of it. Looking at goal number three, again, this is typical for a water system. You want to make sure you have adequate pressure. This is something Mr. Dominguez talked about as it related to the elevated tank and/or any of those other items we'd need to bring online to make sure we have that pressure. For instance, it's not just for your day-to-day use, but if we have a fire event, the chief has to have that pressure in order to fight the fire. So we have to be mindful of those things as we continue to upgrade our system. We have not had tremendous amount of budget repairs allocated in the utility fund to deal with these. It's been basically a minimal amount that's been allocated for emergency repairs in the past couple of years. I know last year we exceeded in that line item, the emergency repairs. We're not off to a good start this year either. So, it's kind of a, you balance it out. Do you want to pay for emergency repairs? Do we want to invest in the system? How do we make it kind of equalize? Because you have to continue to provide the services to your residents as part of our responsibility as a city. Public health and welfare requires clean potable water and fire suppression. So, I know I'm to some extent preaching to the choir, but I'm also trying to explain the seriousness of the issues that we face. So here is some of the numbers as it relates to just the water system itself. You will see that to redrill, we have the option to either redrill at our current sites. We could even rehab the current sites and then drill at other sites, which would give us an additional set of water sources, but from Upper Trinity, the quotes that we've received are about $750,000 per well. So it's not as if you can just pull that out of utility fund or general fund and pay cash for all of that. So that's something to be mindful of depending upon how many, if at all, council wants to move forward on these type of options. To rehab the ground storage tanks at the well sites, which would be wells three, four, and five, it's about $160,000. The Bobo pump station is about 210. The FM 3433 pump station, which is in better condition than Bobo, is about 155 and the elevated tank is approximately 25 for a total of about $550,000. Any questions? I have built into some of these fees, not on this slide, but on some of these slides, we would need to be mindful that if this requires engineering and design, that's another 10 to 15% of the total cost, so we would need to build that into the $550,000. As it relates to your bond discussion later on today, I did build the costs in, but just for apples-to-apples comparison, I did not include them on this slide deck. So, future needs for the system would be a secondary water source. We have talked about this multiple times and we will continue to talk about this as we go through the next six months to 12 months discussing that with the regional approach. There has been some conversation about groundwater versus surface water and what is available to us. I don't know if you had a chance to read that article that was in the messenger, but it was a comprehensive look at kind of the concerns of the entirety of Wise County and the impact of the growth that's going to be coming. As I mentioned, we need a second elevated water tower. That would benefit us now from the standpoint of your system is all looped, so it's all interconnected. And if you had to take the current elevated tank offline, you could use the second tank to provide pressure to a great extent. We don't have that option. So if the elevated tank goes offline, we're going to be in a pickle as it relates to any pressure for the city. Not necessarily an odd situation for a small community to be in, but I just want you to be mindful that that is something that is always a risk for us. We need a second ground storage tank at the Bobo plant. The date is to be determined, but I did give you the costs on that and frankly, it surprised me at $8 per gallon. That's a lot of money to put in a ground storage tank. The last time I was a part of a project to install one, I think it was about a dollar, $2 per gallon, because my previous city, we installed a million gallon ground storage water tank and it was right at $2 million to finish the project. So it's changed considerably since then. So, now we're going to move into our wastewater systems and as I mentioned to you all, we are doing well getting through the slide deck this morning. As I mentioned, we're happy to have any questions, but if you need to take a break, let the mayor know and she can push that forward for you.
I am hearing that the slides are not advancing for viewers that are remote.
Are they stuck on a particular slide or has it just stopped?
The first slide.
All right. I understand that we have the situation rectified with the slide deck. We apologize for that, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. So looking ahead to our wastewater system itself, this is where we have spent a considerable amount of time discussing things over the past year or so. On this slide, on the left, you see a photo, an aerial photo of our west plant and an aerial photo of our east plant, which is on the right. Shayna, would you advance for me? So looking through the lens of the current wastewater system assets, the east wastewater treatment plant, the west wastewater treatment plant exist because we are both graced and challenged with the beautiful topography that exists within the city of Rome. For, we, we are built on a very large ridgeline that goes and follows along 287 and goes up north towards Decatur. And so for the most part, anyone who lives to the east of 287 flows to the east plant and to the west flows to the west plant for the gravity feed, which is so critical for these plants. We do have some meandering in some areas depending upon where you live, so it's not a hard and fast rule, but for the most part, that is what we do experience. We have nine and a half miles of gravity flow piping. We have just under a mile of sewer forced main. We have 150 manholes within the city. Two main lift stations and one collection lift station. This information and all of the system mileage counts, et cetera, were taken from the capital improvement plan that was done in 2016 by Jacob Martin. So focusing on the east wastewater treatment plant, this one was originally built in 1991 and it handles .10 million gallons per day of flow. It can be expanded from the standpoint of increasing the flow that goes to this plant. It's in a very good position for that expansion. It is also the plant that has had the most recent upgrades. In 1990, excuse me, in 2019 or '20, we sold bonds to rehab this site and bring it into more current technology. This was, and what you can't see in this photo, this plant actually originally had Emhoff lagoons, which were basically just collection lagoons that would, the solids would go to the bottom and the water would be off to the side. They're still used considerably in Oklahoma, but we transitioned this plant from that to what it looks like today. In 2020, we had an equalization basin that was installed. You can see that at the top of the photo here. This is kind of a long rectangular look at that plant. Any upgrades to this plant should come through developer agreements. So for instance, if we have Prairie Point that does come online, and I have had conversations with the developer of that section of Rome, they know that they have to pay the fees to upgrade this plant. It would not be borne by the residents of Rome because we currently have, this plant as well situated to serve the current residents. Any expansion that's a result of development will be paid by the developer. Does that make sense? This is actually the most efficient of the plants that we own, as you will probably recall. Short of normal routine type maintenance, this one does not generally experience a lot of unexpected failures of equipment. We do need to upgrade some of the SCADA at this plant as the upgrades and the equipment that we did not that long ago were not included in that option, but we are working to bring that to bear. You can see if you'll advance for me, ma'am. This plant, this is the EQ basin and this is the generator.
That's one of the generators.
Yeah. There's two of them at that site. Any questions on the east plant? Basically, I'm including it here in our conversation today so that we understand the totality of the system, but the east plant does not really require any major repairs, rehab, or upgrades because we have, we've just done that. So advancing to our problem child. Looking at the west plant. This is an aerial of, what do they call this?
The peck.
This piece, what's that called? The clarifier.
The, so the centerpiece, there's a catwalk going through the middle. The clear part in the middle, the darker section is clarifier. The lighter brown on the left side of the photo is going to be your aeration basin. That's where all your bugs are alive and mixing with the inflow, the raw sewer coming in. And then the far right is what is your excess. You're supposed to get rid of it. And well, as you can see, it's very full and it's like that still right now.
So this plant was built in 1998 and its flow is .15 MGD. It's slightly larger than the east plant as it currently sits. We have had multiple violations at this plant. We are currently under a enforcement order through TCEQ from 2016 at this plant. And we have received notices from TCEQ that they, I don't want to say are about to enforce the notice, but they are telling us that we have got to make some strides in fixing this plant or they will come in and enforce the notice. That will definitely take that plant out of our hands and require significant capital to be expended to fix this plant that will not be at the community's direction at that point. This plant has had no significant upgrades since its installation. It still uses ground level drying beds, which I will show you photos of as we move through. The ammonia filters at this plant have been rehabbed three times. They still don't work well. They have never worked well since they were installed. So we do have some challenges here. Will you advance this, please? Thank you. This is a look at the outside of that tank. I just showed you the aerial looking down into the solids and the liquids that are contained inside this. The tank on the outside doesn't look too terribly awful, but we do have overflow that occurs in this area. Would you advance this, ma'am? And this is what we're talking about. This plant is at capacity pretty much all the time. You will see that as it exists today, it's not going to take much for that to overflow. Any significant rain event that we have causes this plant to overflow, causes us to, we have to self-report to TCEQ. It becomes another violation issue for us and it goes basically in our file with TCEQ as it relates to this project. Does that make sense? So we do not have a way currently to upgrade or fix this plant because A, it is very elderly, two, B, it has not had any significant technology upgrades since it was put in place and it's, it's a challenge. It's also a health hazard. So this is why TCEQ watches what happens with this plant. These are the ground level drying beds where the solids that Mr. Dominguez talked about, so basically the sewage is laid out in these beds to dry. In the winter, it doesn't dry so great because it's cold, it's sometimes rainy. In the summer, not such a problem. But these beds spend most of their time full because we do not live in a sunny climate, 365, and it makes it difficult to get it dried and disposed of. So when it is fully dried, it is, staff have to take, take it out and they put it in a dumpster and it's hauled off by a waste provider. It's taken to the landfill. One of the things that could be done at this plant like you saw at the east plant is we could replace the drying system and put in a screw press and other upgrades. And I'll let Mr. Dominguez speak to some of that as we go forward because he is definitely the expert on that plant.
So our, our technology there at the west plant, as you can see, is very out of date. A screw press, this, the drying beds right now, for them to dry during the summer, you're talking, if it's really hot outside, maybe five days for it to dry out, we'll go in rakes and shovels, shovel it in the backhoe and then move it to the dumpster. And then when the dumpster's full, we haul it off, come back, rinse and repeat every time. When it rains, that is a whole nother story. We're talking 10 to 15 days. Wintertime, it's been three months and we have been unable to clean them out because it's just, it rains and it just doesn't dry. It's too cold. Screw press makes this process go from whatever the weather's like for the beds, five days or 20 days or three months to minutes. What it does is it grabs a chemical named polymer. It grabs a sludge. It's pressed in a, pretty much like a, two pieces of metals pressing against each other, rinses the water out and it moves the sludge out straight into the dumpster. You can turn it on all day long and it'll do it all day long. And it makes the process faster. Therefore, the plant can operate like it's supposed to and we have time to actually do our, our job properly.
Because at this point, those beds don't dry and then what happens to all the stuff in the circular one that keeps building up?
So right now, what I do is we, we operate as best as we can without calling the truck in to haul it off. Each truck loads $5,000 and that only lasts me two, three days. I haven't had to do that because I manage with what I can, but right now usually towards February through March, it gets to the hardest point where I have to start calling in trucks to haul it off.
So the screw, the screw press would resolve the solid waste removal problem, but it does not solve the overflow problem?
Correct. That is just your day-to-day operations and your biological demand.
And we do have one of those at the east plant, correct?
What is the cost of this group price?
We've got pricing for basically OPCs or opinions of probable cost from your engineer as we go through. The cost when this plant was originally discussed was $2.5 million to bring it up to minimum requirements for TCEQ. That doesn't do anything for the screw press or to deal with the INI or any of the other issues. So that baseline cost is now about $5 million because we have delayed decisions and any type of action on the plant. To replace it entirely, it's about $11 million. Even if you, even if you go through the process of doing the bare bones minimum of TCEQ, you don't gain any of the efficiencies per se. So we'll talk about that. You do have a, another set of documents at your table that explain those OPCs and so we'll get there in just a second on the cost.
I did want to mention, so this plant right now, I've talked to our engineer about it and the, it has a biological issue. So say we didn't get a screw press. The water, the excess water, it's gonna take out of the sludge, it throws it back in the plant. This plant can't handle that. So what it's gonna do is it's gonna go back through and then she's gonna overturn the whole plant and that's a whole nother violation because we're not processing the sludge properly and the, the results are just gonna be outside of the state standards and requirements and guidelines and all that. So there, there is a problem within the problem within another problem.
So it would seem like the most effective solution is just to replace it entirely.
Expand it or get a bigger one as this one's full capacity or, or if there's an option to expand it, I mean, yeah, but I've talked to a few people and there's a lot of question in expanding one of these kind of plants because it's round, so it's not as easy as the other plant. You can add another square piece and it works just fine because they're independent. This is kind of all in one and I would definitely recommend not getting another one of those.
And are y'all gonna discuss options on what type of plant that you want?
Yes. So moving ahead to, this is one of the filters, our D filter at the west plant. It was not originally designed for wastewater and it's never worked well in our system. It's had issues since its installation. It should filter out surface water with sand and gravel. It clogs often. It also ends up with solids and other flushed items in the filter that require the staff to remove those with a net or something. I know I have visited this plant and there are soap bars, there are soap wrappers, there are other wrappers in this filtration system that come, some from Motel Six, several of them, because it has their branded marketing material on it. One of the other things that we did not include per se in the photos of this plant is the east plant compared to the west, when some of that debris comes into the system, the east plant has a filter that removes it before it hits basically the circular or the clarifier, any of that. The west plant, staff are required to use a rake and pull out sanitary products, toilet paper, other things of that nature into a trash can. They then have to take that trash can down the stairs and heft it over the top into the trash can, often getting materials on them that they shouldn't be exposed to. So when it was installed, it was probably state-of-the-art. It is no longer. So moving ahead to this next slide, you will see that the electrical panels at the west plant, while they are undercover, which is very helpful, they will need to be upgraded as well. And this that you see is the lift station for the solid waste where it comes into that plant. The west plant has lived its lifespan and from staff standpoint, we would definitely recommend a complete replacement of the plant and an expansion. We will continue to see development come that will need to flow to that west plant. We've had a lot of interest in restaurants, retail and other over by the Loves area. And at current, I don't have any capacity to offer them at the west plant to come in. So Rome is missing opportunities to provide services that the residents would like to see, restaurants, places to shop, maybe doctors' offices and other things that we can't push the flow to the west plant, so we can't have that expansion and services for the residents. So this is very important to us, probably the most important if I had to rank them all, would be the replacement of the west plant in dealing with the old clay pipes that exist within Old Town. Now, Mr. Dominguez may have another opinion, but I do think that would solve a tremendous amount of issues that we have within our city. So if you'll advance to the next slide, the INI testing and repairs goes hand-in-hand with the west plant. You have heard us talk about this multiple times. We have old clay pipes that have been in the system that are deteriorating rapidly. And when they collapse, they cause sewer issues. They cause additional water to run into the west plant, which helps it to overflow. And you really can't fix one without the other. If we attempted to replace the west plant, we would need one that's probably twice its size if we don't fix the INI. Then you have issues with balancing the bacteria and the solids and Mr. Dominguez can speak to this very eloquently, but it just doesn't work one without the other. And the old clay pipes are eventually going to cause problems for folks who live in Old Town because you're going to see backups into your homes. You're not going to be able to get your waste to flow out into the plant and that's a mess I don't want to have for anyone, frankly.
Would replacement of the clay pipes, I would imagine the homes with these clay pipes also have their own clay pipes going to the home itself? Would the plan include replacing for those individual homeowners also?
So that is, that is a gray area where public funds, as we know, cannot be used in private property. I'm sure we could find a program. I'm sure there's a program somewhere to help with that. But you're right, fixing our side is a big problem, but if every house has clay tile going to it, kind of, you still have an issue, but the main is the big problem.
I can speak with personal experience with this. My daughter just had her pipes collapse down in Lake Bird and so it cost her about a week of problems and $20,000, which is a bit of a number.
Several years ago, on my street, I mean, most of our neighbors have, they've all gone to the PVC. And several years ago, there was a backup in the main and I ended up with the best of Rome in my side yard, which was not pleasant at all. Anyway, after that, I did. Anyway, after that, I did, um, and I, I'm, I'm not saying I'm isolated or anything because my neighbors have done the same thing. My stuff is all replaced, both inbound and outbound. The galvanized was replaced with pecs, uh, the outbound was replaced with PVC. And however, when it came to tying in, we did tie in to the existing city clay pipes. There was no choice. So, but I would say that most of my neighbors, you know, they're all homeowners. And most of them have, uh, already done that long ago.
I did want to put on, uh, I did want to say something about the west plant. So say you do build a plant that's big enough to handle INI. You're still in violation with the state though. Because it isn't what your plant can really handle. It's how many connections you have. It's a map. You know, there's fifty gallons a minute coming in when there's only supposed to be ten, you're still forty gallons a minute. I just wanted to say that so we're not confused.
I thought they took action on that several years ago by replacing the manhole covers. Oh, when Lance was here, no.
They, that's what I like to call a patch. They fix a manhole. But I mean, you're still having the issue with water getting in the clay lines. In order to actually resolve the INI, you have to replace the clay line. It's.
Well, it's my understanding in the original, when I read through it, the original Jacob and Martin did call for replacing clay pipes, uh, certain amount of feet, uh, per year. At, you know, just for the council to allocate fifty thousand dollars and uh, do a certain amount of clay pipes every year. And I don't know that that was ever followed through.
To my knowledge, to my know- to my knowledge, uh, I was around when Lance was here. We never did anything while I was here, uh, and then the former director, I don't recall, they did a little bit of sections down on First Street on this side. I think when Lance was here, actually, they did a little bit of O-mill. And then, but it's not enough to, to really.
Part of school's been redone, I believe, too.
Yeah, there's little sections there, but there, it still ties into clay tile at the end of it. And that's why we need to get a camera to find out where the clay tile is and actually come up with the plan.
Yeah, on O-mill, it was about sixty feet that they did.
Oh, yeah, that's a, yeah. Needs a lot.
So moving through to look at the rest of the system components as it relates to your wastewater. We do have two main lift stations and one collection lift station. You see that this is the lift station at Loves. This location needs a backup generator in order to keep the flow moving from this, um, spot into the plant, but we do not have a generator for this location. So we also have to the mayor's report, we do have some recommendations from that twenty sixteen plan by Jacob Martin. And this again is, is fairly consistent with most cities to provide safe and sanitary sewage disposal. I think this is where we are talking about, um, mayor, here's where it says repair and replace all leaking manholes by twenty thirty-six. And dilapidated wastewater pipe by twenty thirty-six. So that recommendation was made during the twenty sixteen plan. And it sounds like little bits and pieces of it have been done, but not a comprehensive overview of that. Um, it also talks about replacing the treatment units at the west plant, dealing with the inflow and infiltration or the INI by twenty sixteen, which we are behind, um, the new manholes to come into compliance with TCEQ spacing requirements by twenty thirty-six, et cetera. So, um, one of the interesting pieces out of that report was to also connect residents that are not connected to our current system by twenty thirty-six. So we do have some folks within the city that are still on septic and not connected to our wastewater system.
Are you mandating that they hook up or is it an option?
It's an option. It was just a recommendation in the plan. But I don't think anything has proceeded from that time. Okay. So moving ahead to looking at what I was talking about, some of the financials, we've looked at this slide before. You can tell for the last thirty years, from nineteen ninety coming forward to twenty twenty-three, we have only spent about eight million dollars on the entirety of that system to make repairs and or improvements to it. The two point six million is the monies that you see that just dealt with the east plant, which is why we see it in such good condition today. So if you take that out of the mix, you're down to about six million, five and a half to six million dollars that we've invested in the system as a whole. That doesn't amount to more than about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, which doesn't even deal with the depreciation of the system itself. We have not kept pace in anything for water and wastewater as we have looked at this through those years. So this is why we have got some decisions to make and why it's an important issue for the community now. Shayna, would you move me forward, please? You will recall that I found in some of our meeting minutes from twenty fourteen that we had a twenty thirteen audit done by our then CPA, a gentleman named Peter Cheney, who advised that the Water and Sewer Fund was approaching insolvency. We've discussed this before at our twenty, our, our meeting in December. The deficiencies for that fund dated back as far as two thousand and five, meaning your expenditures exceeded your revenues. So you were always running in the red from the standpoint of the utility fund. I've listed the years from ten, eleven, twelve and thirteen that he referenced and the amount that he showed that that was short. This actually, I've broken it down to look at from a different view because it can get a little confusing when you're looking at accounting speak versus what is actual cash dollars from revenue and expenditures. He did also advise during this audit that the rates would need to be raised in the utility fund in order for this account to function properly. So just to refresh people's memory, the utility fund is what's called a proprietary fund. It's meant to pay for itself. General fund, which is your main operating account for your other services within the city, should not supplement utility fund when at all possible. That's not good business practices. You're basically supplementing your water rate when it should stand on its own, water and sewer rates. They did discuss rate changes and there were some made, um, but the next slides, we'll talk about some of that as we go through, Shayna. So this slide talks about the water weight, rate revenue or review of, of the base rate over the years from ten coming forward. So after he made his presentation, there was a change in twenty ten to rates. There were two changes in twenty sixteen, one in February and one in November to try and not make this a big shock to people's systems so that they could adjust to those rates. There was another in twenty seventeen and in twenty twenty-two. So this is some of the frustration of our residents is they see that their rates are going up, but they don't see any improvements in the system or any capacity or any additional water. And so it frustrates them and rightfully so. However, what we're not discussing or haven't discussed is from as far back as the slide that we just looked at in the nineteen nineties, this fund was not performing well. And so the rate changes that came in ten, sixteen, seventeen and twenty twenty-two were really playing catch up for rates that had been held steady and not moved for many, many years. In your utility fund, your rate should be reviewed every two years and you should have, unless there is no inflation and no cost escalations, you should have slight increases every year so that you don't have these big falls off a cliff from the standpoint of, oh my gosh, the house is burning down, we've got to really raise rates. And then people are rightfully upset because they don't understand. That's part of the fiduciary duty of council over the years that we need to look at this routinely so that we're making those incremental rates. The same thing occurs in other cities when you have police and firefighters, this is where I generally hear of it, where we don't keep pace with what current pay rates are. And then you end up with a tremendous amount of vacancies in those critical positions. And in order to recruit or retain, you have to make significant changes in payroll all at once. This is why I recommend to you that as we prepare the budget, we make those incremental changes every year. It's not much different than a private business when you see their rates go up or you see the cost for their goods go up. It's because either you have inflation or you just have a general escalation in costs. The city has to account for that too. You cannot hold your revenue and your expenditures static and expect not to have your city fail at some point. Things change over time. And the longer the time goes that the things change, the more drastic of a move you have to make either in the tax rate or in your water sewer rates or payroll or other things. That's why you have to constantly look at those. Go ahead, Shayna. So this talks about the water rates as it relates to residents and you can see that the incremental changes have been put in place. We discussed this in depth during our December meeting. The rates are tiered, which is meant to help conserve water as we go along. So you'll see that a resident who uses two to ten thousand gallons pays a different rate than one who uses ten to twenty or twenty thousand and above. So it's meant to be, the more you use, the more you pay, which is appropriate. It has had an increase over the years slightly to make those rates a little bit more competitive. I did pull at the time, some of our surrounding cities' rates and we are still well under void and Infomark and Infomark provides for Blue Stem and Reunion. And the Newark rates are comparable with ours. So just for some sort of a barometer that gives you an idea of what we're looking at for water rates for residential. We also have a different rate for those who live outside the city limits because we do provide water to some folks who are not within Rome proper. Yes, sir?
The six hundred sixty connections, so is that just within city limits or?
No, that's system wide.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry, that's system wide. So when you look at the outside the city limits, you can see if you laid those two slides side by side that the rates are different. For instance, if you just look at twenty twenty-two rates for the twenty thousand gallons plus, they're paying sixteen point oh three, excuse me, that's in twenty seventeen. They're paying seventeen seventy-one for twenty thousand plus and it is eleven thirty-six for resident. So it is tiered whether you are directly within the city or outside the city, and that's appropriate considering residents within your city limits are also paying property tax to the city to provide city services, but those on the outside are not. So this is an appropriate tiering of this type of a rate. We also have commercial rates that are not much different off the residential rates. I know that there was, um, some concern the last times the wastewater was raised and the, the water rates were changed, that it was having a negative impact on the businesses and there was much discussion about that. I would say that in looking at some of our surrounding cities, I don't find that we are out of balance from them. So looking at wastewater, this is one of the more telling slides that we have. When I talked to you about doing incremental increases in services over the years, you can see that in nineteen ninety-six, the wastewater or the sewer rate was eleven dollars. And it stayed that same amount for twenty-five years, which is part of the problem that we have today. And then in twenty twenty-one, there was a significant increase because we needed to gain ground from all of those years that there were no changes in the rate. I think that helped explain some of the frustration of our residents and it's a visual depiction of the challenges that this utility fund has had because we have not performed the recommended rate review schedulings and we have not adjusted rates over those years.
So of those six hundred sixty connections, how many are within city limits?
Wastewater is different than water. The six hundred and sixty is for water connections. Uh, I don't have at my fingertips the number of wastewater connections that we have.
So, so the outside city limits water customers do not pay wastewater?
We don't offer wastewater, I believe, outside the city limits.
So we, we have, so we don't know how many connections we have within city and we're only charging the folks that subscribe to our water in city.
Well, we do know how many. I don't have it with me. That was not a data point I pulled from Julie before the presentation, but, um, those that are not connected do not pay.
Um, a lot of cities, over thirty in the area, I believe, when I saw, are charging something called a water runoff fee. And according to state law, my understanding is that we would be allowed to do that if we just so chose and we choose not to at this time. Just another idea. Again, it's gonna, it will be another rate increase regardless of what you call it.
I can say I'm not familiar with that process, but we could certainly do some research if it ever came to that. So looking ahead and moving on to commercial, you will see that it experienced some of the same situation that the residential rate did. It actually was at eleven dollars in nineteen ninety-six. It was changed in two thousand and two to fifteen. And then it was held steady for seventeen years at the same rate. It was changed in twenty twenty to thirty dollars and then we had to have a significant jump in twenty twenty-one to seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. And this is some of what caused the frustration amongst our businesses and the conversations amongst council of what could we do? Unfortunately, there was little to be done because the fund needs to balance and needs to pay for the services. And as you can see, or as we will continue to look at, it's running the red many years. And so these adjustments were made in order to deal with those deficiencies over the years. And they were also made in the hopes of giving us enough capacity within utility fund to issue debt. So hold that as we go through these next couple of slides. So this is a new slide that I have provided to you that just looks at revenues and expenditures in the utility fund for the past ten years. You can see that we had three negative years and eight positive years. That final number of approximately forty-two thousand is from the unaudited budget to actual numbers that I have on hand predicted for FY twenty-three. That may change once the audit is finished. But as of now, it gives you a look at potentially what the twenty-three numbers would look like. When we began this journey of looking at the fund's performance, we've had some residents, as I mentioned, asked what happened to that capacity in the fund. So you will see when the rates were changed in twenty twenty-one, we had a resulting increase in revenue in twenty twenty-two and we had a surplus of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is why I'm showing you that in gray. But then you see because of cost escalations and emergency repairs and other issues related to that fund, that surplus did not continue. It takes about seventy-seven to eighty thousand dollars to service a million dollars worth of debt. When council was looking at potentially making some changes to the west plant, the original agreement was to spend about six million dollars on the plant to upgrade it. And because of the delays in putting the program forward, the capacity to spend that money because of cost escalations of the plant cut in half. So our six million dollars that council had built in and that we thought we would have to issue the debt got cut in half to about three million. We had some changeover in personnel. We lost the public works director. We lost the city administrator. That project got put on hold until new people were hired and came in and could assess the situation. That three million dollars in capacity has now diminished. The fund is yet again breaking even and we still have the problem with the west plant. I cannot stress enough that the delays in implementing these projects are going to negatively affect us if we make a decision and we don't issue the debt and move and get the prices locked in. Just like with anyone in their home or their car or the mortgage rates or anything, we're experiencing the same issues with projects. What was going to cost six million dollars to rehab the old school and make it a functioning community center for everyone is now going to cost three times that because it was not put in place. But we have a beautiful asset that's sitting right next door to us that's deteriorating every year. That carries a tremendous amount of history and folks in this community actually attended school there. So these are the things that council unfortunately has to wrestle with that are hard decisions that the residents have to understand and make an informed decision when they vote. We have to start reinvesting in Rome.
Now, you've mentioned. Now, you've mentioned earlier like things that the city is required to do by the state. The things that are, uh, the city is required to do by the state. And there's, you know, the city requirement versus voter approval. At what point do those cross over? Where we no longer have, the voters no longer have a choice? Or is that such? Or does the city just fail when the voters do that?
That's a great question. So if TCEQ has to come in and do an enforcement with us, they're going to fine us every day until we fix the problem. It will cost far more to deal with TCEQ and those daily fines than it's going to cost to fix the plan. So at some point, the city will become insolvent and it will have to declare bankruptcy. I can't put it any plainer than that. So if you'll advance the slide and look at, this is what Mr. Chaney was talking about in your fund. You will see that this brings forward 2013 to 2022. If you go back to the 2010 numbers that he was talking about with depreciation in your assets and the utility funds numbers of revenues and expenditures, this fund has never shown a profit that I can see because we have not reinvested. We have not adjusted rates over the years. We have not kept pace with inflation. We have not repaired our assets. And so when you depreciate and you show revenues and expenditures, you are in the red from 2013 to 2022 from what I can see.
Without doing these improvements, how does that impair the city's ability to allow new businesses to come in?
We can't. We no longer have capacity at the West Plant. So the developers who have contacted me about developing along 114 down around Loves, I have had to put them on hold because I don't have wastewater to offer them and they cannot because of the CCN and other TCEQ requirements, they cannot put in their own sewer system.
So without adding these additional facilities for our wastewater and water, the city will fit because no new businesses will come in.
That is a possible, very strong possibility as we go along. One of the other things to be mindful of is that some of the recent changes in the legislature as it relates to annexation, if we cannot provide city services to the properties that are within city limits, none of those in that area are within city limits currently, but they can de-annex. And so we lose that taxing authority for that area and then they can develop anyway. And we don't have any partnership or integration with those developers to help benefit Rome, to help spread the costs out like I've talked about. I mean, think of it from the lens of if you have a business and you have 10 customers versus 1,000 customers. It's just a maths number at this point. And when we only have 660 connections for our water system and less than that for our wastewater, then just those people are going to bear the cost. But if you have 2,000 people bearing the cost, your cost goes down because it's now spread across this base of folks that is larger. It is as simple as that. And you do not want to pay cash for all of these projects because then only you 1,900 that I talked about on Thursday are paying cash. What about the 3,000 that are going to live here in five years? So you're just giving them the system for free. This is why you issue debt. This is why you pay it out over 30 or 40 years so that it is spread across that generations of folks who are going to use it.
Question because if, you know, all right, you've got the existing residents here and then other people come in. You make the investment in doing these things, but um, it's my understanding that was, uh, council before had passed the impact fees, about $12,000 to build a home. And I thought that was intended to offset the costs of what we had as far as both water and wastewater.
You're correct. But when we have developers come in that, say for instance, the Prairie Point developer, they're putting in all the infrastructure if that moves forward. You can't charge impact fees to them because they are, they are doing the work. They will then deed the system over to the city and then we're required to upkeep it. But the impact fee is a one-time cost. I'm talking ongoing monthly billing that is far better when it's spread across 3,000 people versus 1,900.
Plus, if we get businesses to come in, those businesses are paying taxes, sales, sales taxes coming in to the city. It's also offsetting those property taxes, correct?
Yes.
So if I were to summarize, it'd be like we don't create the bond issues and pass them in order to resolve these situations. Effectively, the city is in a downward spiral until it becomes Reno and goes out of business.
That is extremely possible, yes. Just from looking at financials. So then looking at the next slide, this is the one that I have showed to you before that I hope will help explain some of the challenges that we've had with this fund. What I have done to update this is shown in 2022, a gray color for when the sewer rates were increased. That brings us back to that bonding capacity that we thought we would have as a result of raising those sewer rates. One of the things that kind of perplexed me when I came in was hearing from a variety of people who had been here that the decision was made to issue five and a half or six million dollars worth of bonds. Rates were changed, but we didn't issue the bonds. We didn't do any of the projects. So where's the money? So by picking apart the utility fund and getting it analyzed, you can see that the rates increased in '22 and we did have a surplus. But you can see the very next year because of cost escalations, emergency repairs, other needs, that that capacity has diminished. Even the 2022 rate increase for sewer at $80,000 per million dollars of debt, you still don't have the capacity to fund the monies that we need. So out of utility fund, that delta is not there to service the bonds, which is where you would traditionally put that. So Mr. Loftus, to your point, if council makes the hard decision to put bonds out and they're voted down, the next step is to change water and sewer rates to service the bonds. That's the next step to keep the city from going insolvent. Any questions?
Could I see the next slide, please? So according to this, if we take the high end estimate on the replacement of the wastewater, West wastewater treatment plant and the clay pipes, we could be looking at between 18 to 20 million dollars, I would say, one around figure.
Correct.
So, uh, earlier you stated that the interest service on a million dollars is about 80,000 a year?
That's the debt service. So for each million, we would pay about $80,000.
So at $20 million to $80,000, that's $1.6 million of debt service annually for you would have to raise rates. $1.6 million annually just to pay the interest on repairing the facility.
To service the debt. So that, that's principal and interest. And I would caution you that any rate at that level is not going to bring businesses to Rome. You're going to see people having to move. So that's not what I'm recommending. But what I am trying to make sure that we all understand is because of all the deferrals for the past 20 or 25 years, that's what you all are dealing with today. And we have to make some changes.
I was just trying to quantify the issue.
So since we have moved ahead to that slide, this gives you an idea of what the costs are or the OPCs. If you will look at your place, I have put a document like this. It's highlighted and the first page says option one. These are the newest numbers that I have received from Kimley Horn as it relates to the West Plant. You will see that the title says TCEQ minimum and operational efficiencies. This is just to bring us up to the very lowest level that TCU, TCEQ requires. It does not gain us any capacity. It does not update any of the technology.
So the last time we looked at this, it was at 1. something million just for the lowest level.
Yeah. And this is just general cost escalations that everyone else is feeling for everything else that they purchase. And the longer we put this off, the more it's going to cost us. If you will flip it over to the next page, this is option number two. The difference between option number two and option number three, it has an arrow there beside it under number three. You will see that option two brings you an EQ basin, a disc filter, solids handling, mechanical bar screen, all of those things that we talked about as being important to getting a current technology facility online for this, for the city. You can see that that's just under $9 million for option two. When you go on to the back page and look at option number three, the Influent lift station is added to this and it makes it a 10.371 rec or estimate of the cost to replace it. And as I mentioned, these numbers do not include your engineering and design fees, which is why the numbers on the slide look different than what you have in front of you. I did build in a 15% cost. Because when and if we make a decision to put bonds on the ballots, you have to have a maximum amount that you would issue for. So you, if you said, and I'm completely making this number up, $10 million for X and it ends up being 12 million, the city has to find the delta. And we don't have that kind of reserve to do. So I wanted to make sure that the costs were included. If the city said, we're going to issue 12 million and the project ended up being 10, then you do not have to issue the extra bonded amount. You can't exceed it, but you don't have to expend all of that. Does that make sense? So these are the latest and greatest numbers that I just received this week from Kimley Horn and Mrs. Tai, you are correct. Every time I check these numbers, they've gone up considerably. Now, looking at the Oak Clay Pipes in Old Town area, it's about three and a half million dollars to fix that. Unfortunately, both of these projects are pretty much a baseline to get started.
Dan, did you say the engineering fees were not included in this?
They are in the slide deck, not in the paperwork you have in front of you.
What is the engineering down here at the, where it says subtotal, subtotal, I can't tell if my glasses are on?
It says, I'm sorry, it says no design.
Oh, no design, okay.
See where it's checked there, basis for cost projection.
Okay.
So those costs may be a little bit lower than what I have on the slide deck. So looking at this slide as it relates to the replacement of that West Plant and the Oak Clay Pipes, these are, as I mentioned, just two projects that are absolutely critical to the health and welfare of Rome and critical to the system overall. These would have cost considerably less dollars if we had addressed this even five years ago. Any questions? Okay, so looking forward to public works needs as it relates to equipment. We have talked about some of this in the past and there are different options to finance some of these things. We need a trailer mounted jetter and a hydro machine. When we had the line break on Troxel just a few weeks ago, that was a major issue for us. And I'm going to let Mr. Dominguez speak to some of those items.
A couple of weeks ago, when we did the Troxel main break and even the one in front of the police department, we started to do the main break with our hydro excavator. And it's not lucky, it was about to catch on fire. It had a, I guess, it had a huge hydraulic leak and we had to put that to the side due to the the spacing, the backhoe. It's great for open areas, but in tight spaces, it just doesn't fit. There's fiber optics, there was a bore machine in the way. So we had to call a contract crew to come in and fix the the leak. A hydro excavator, a trailer or a working hydro excavator, which you dig with water would have helped tremendously. And then going to the PD side, same issue. Try to use a backhoe. The area was so wet, got stuck. And, uh, yeah, it's a again hydro vac, but then we came across to one another issue where there was a lot of concrete and we have a jackhammer that's electrical. Hasn't been used in 10 years. Probably about that big. And, uh, the company, we had to call a company. We just, there's no way we could done it. And they brought a huge machine with a, or a hydro excavator with a jackhammer on it. And they did that for about three hours till they finally broke the concrete off. So we would have been there probably three days, honestly, if we even would have broke it. But, uh, our equipment's just the hydro excavator y'all seen, we've talked about, it's out of date and, uh, uh, sent in to get the hydraulic fixed and I think the city should consider selling it while it's working and get something versus it breaking completely, the engine or or the hy, the vacuum part. I know they replaced it once. It was $60,000. That was about 10 years ago. So we're replacing now. There's no telling how much that is, or maybe they don't even make that part. But.
You've got two options in front of you that Mr. Dominguez researched and one includes the trade-in value of the vector that we currently have that's been predicted to be about 30,000. These are basically two different vendors that he has sourced this from and you can see that the prices are not considerably different. It just depends on your trade-in value and the original cost of the machines as it relates to what the jetter and the hydro costs. We don't, we have the third option to auction the vector, but we don't know what it will bring it auctioned. So I would not necessarily recommend that because it might not even bring the 19.5 or the 30,000 that were being shown for trade-in value on both of these bids. So one of the things that we can do or that council can consider after we make the decision on some of the big three items, as I would call them, the water wells, the West Plant and the I and I, is we do have the, the ability to enter into agreements with GovCap to purchase equipment. And we can finance those out over years. And that is not, I wouldn't recommend that you issue debt for that is what I'm saying. I would recommend that you go into a financing agreement with a third party for low interest loan to pay these out over time. You'll recall that we did pay cash with ARPA funds for a few things that they've needed. We are expecting the new trucks that were authorized by a previous council to arrive within the next, hopefully two to four weeks at the latest, which will be a, a great blessing to them and get them a bit more mobile with more reliable equipment in that area. And so we need to just kind of keep chipping away at what these gentlemen need to provide the services for the community. Continuing to outsource some of this when they have the expertise to do it will cost us more money as we go along. But when they don't have what they need, we don't really have a choice because we have to get the leak fixed and, and move things through. Next slide, please. This is a list of some additional equipment that they need. When Mr. Dominguez talked about a sewer camera for the I and I, we've got that price listed there. As we look at some of the roadways and Mr. Johnson, you may be able to weigh in on some of this a little bit better than what I know. A crack sewer machine for roadways and a hot box potful patch machine are about $65,000 apiece. It's my understanding that those would allow us to seal cracks to help prevent decay of roads, but I'm not a roads expert. And I will put that out there straight away. They also have a one-ton truck in the back that they do need replaced. It's about $95,000. They need tools and toolboxes and mounted lights for the new trucks, which are about 25,000. Now, we do have those three utility trailers that council authorized that we could auction those in order to recoup some costs. We'd also like to auction off the large dump truck that we talked to you about that's at the East Plant that is not really functional and nobody can drive it. If we auction that off as well, that might help offset some of those tools and toolboxes and mounted lights costs. One of the other things that they don't have that they would very much like to have on hand in the shop are supplies for emergency repairs. The last break that we had, it took Mr. Dominguez three and a half hours to go round town and and find the parts in order to get that fixed. It would cost about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars just to get some basic piping and other type of equipment in their office back here that they could then, if it's the middle of the night, they could go in and get what they need and get it done. Or if it's during the day, they're not required to try and source it all around town because sometimes we don't find these things as local as we would like. We've also men, mentioned that we need two generators at the pump stations. Those are a hundred thousand dollars apiece for the Bobo and the FM thirty four thirty three plant. And then a mounted generator on a trailer with the transfer switches for the water wells is about ninety thousand if we were to invest in something like that. Staff is not before you today to make a request for all of these items. What we're doing is giving you an overview of what's necessary just to do their job. We will have to prioritize these and make a decision as to which way council wants to go as this continues and as we evolve the conversation. Next slide, please ma'am. These are some projects that I had staff work on. You will see later on in this presentation that all departments have created a projects list and they have prioritized those for council review. We have also looked at vision and mission statements as it relates to Rome and what we'd like to see the community be as we continue to evolve. And as I generally say, when we grow up, what do we want to look like? Especially since we're a small community still yet. So some of the next work that council needs to do is to work on a strategic plan. What are we going to do long range? What are our goals? What does the city want to accomplish in all of our systems? So that staff have a roadmap from which to work forward from there. So this is one of the projects that all our departments worked on. And you'll see that Mr. Dominguez and his team have listed these out. In the next twelve months, they'd like to review the water and sewer rates and put this on a two-year rotating basis so that we do not have any more of those large increases in water or sewer rates that cause or catch people by surprise. They'd like to recommend that we drill wells, potentially two to three, to augment our current sources of water and rehab the four wells that we currently have on site to help supplement our water. We'd like to repair the Oakley pipes or the INI repair that we've talked about. We'd like to replace the West wastewater treatment plant. It needs a new screw press, it needs filters, it needs a muffin master machine, all those things that we've already discussed today. We'd like to rehab or replace the ground storage tanks at the well sites and the pump sites. We will probably have to prioritize, given the new cost that we got at eight dollars per gallon for those, because that's a significant investment. We have running concurrent with all of these other projects that the team is working on. We have a lead and copper project that is mandated by the federal government that we are working through. The deadline for that is October of this year, so I'm sure you will hear more about that as we go down that process. They would also like to have a quarrel meter residual kit within the next six months. What's helpful testing, purchasing those generators that were listed on the previous slide and the one for the transfer switches. The sewer camera is critical to the work that we would need to do with the INI or frankly, anything else within this city because we don't have the ability to see down into our pipes. They would like to have those toolboxes and tools. They'd like to consider a replacement at the park of the current bathroom system that is installed with either stainless steel fixtures so that they're easier to clean or with porta potties. We have had some feedback from some residents about their level of frustration with their, the bathrooms accessibilities at the family park, especially when they're down there with their children. But I can tell you that in listening to the stories of staff, we've not had some folks behave responsibly with that bathroom. And staff should not be, they shouldn't have to clean the things off the wall they have to clean. And if we replaced it with stainless steel type fixtures, they could simply hose it down a whole lot easier than what we have now. One of the things we also talked about in our brainstorming session as part of creating a sense of community within Rome is we'd like to see about allocating funding for Christmas lights on the buildings that the city owns or operates this fall and potentially looking at putting on the light posts along Business Two Eighty Seven, some sort of decoration, if that's something that council's interested in. It's not necessarily a decision for today, of course, but these are just things that the staff has talked about that would help create that community that people are looking for here within Rome and give us something that we can be proud of and kind of all rally around, if you will. So that's one of the things that we've discussed. When you look a little further out. Shayna, thank you. They would like to see a backhoe cover. Right now, the backhoe that we invested in is parked under the elevated tank, which gives me a little concern. One, it's not meant to park equipment underneath. Two, it's not the biggest space to put it. And three, we could use that space for something else. So we would like to see if council would allocate some funds to build a cover or some sort of a metal structure to go over. It doesn't have to be a hardened building, but something that we could park the backhoe under to keep it out of the elements. Of course, you see that we have to repaint and rehab the elevated tank, not the tan, as I have listed on the slide. They'd like to review the handgun ordinance as it relates for public works that Mr. Johnson and I have discussed. There are some recommended upgrades to park equipment, potentially from the standpoint of expanding the enjoyment of the kids of the playground. We could put one of those sail structures over top that would shade it some in the August and September timeframes in July, which might give it some more usage. Eventually, they would like to have an actual shop for public works. They don't have that currently. So these are kind of long, longer range plans as we talk about facilities and other things that we can do to enhance Rome that we would bring forward. So you may ask then, okay, how does all this get funded? And we have discussed this before. There are a variety of plans as it relates to the state and TWDB that can be applied for. We have applied in the past and have not had, not been selected, for lack of a better term. And it has kind of delayed some of those things down the line. The Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District, Mayor Mitchell had a representative come in at the Thursday meeting and talk about rainwater harvesting. I have received the application for that and can certainly fill it out and have it on the meeting on the twenty second for you to consider. And that may be something that would be beneficial to the fire department. I'd like to speak to Chief Estes about that component. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund would allow for funding for low interest loans on the West Plant. It's a minimum of eighteen month to two-year process. TCEQ is not going to give us that much time to deal with the West Plant because we have delayed from twenty sixteen anything coming forward. The Drinking Water State Revolving Fund may give us some options for low interest loans for drilling wells. But I'm, I'm not certain how long, it's the same process, eighteen months to two years. My concern with that is with our contract running out with Walnut Creek in twenty nine, we either need to renegotiate that and extend it or we're going to have to find a secondary source. Because if they turn us off in October of twenty nine, we don't have enough water to wash hands with what our wells produce. So that's going to be a big focus of our efforts over the next bit of time. Next slide, please ma'am. All right, so this may be a good spot to take a break. It's ten o'clock. We're going to head into the roadway system from here. So if we'd like to take a five or ten minute break, that might be a recommendation that I would have.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, so we pick back, pick up, excuse me, pick back up our discussion talking about our roadway system. As you know, we have major highways, which are State Highway One Fourteen and US Highway Eighty One Two Eighty Seven that roam right through the middle of Rome, no pun intended. We also have Main Street, which is Highway Eighty One Two Eighty Seven Business and FM Thirty Four Thirty Three. All of this information was taken from your CIP from Jacob and Martin in twenty sixteen with total street miles of twenty five point eight nine. At that time, they rated about five percent of our city streets in low to poor condition in twenty sixteen and that has changed significantly since then. At that time, we also had about five percent of the streets with curb and gutter, meaning the gutters would take the water off and run it down into different areas of the city. This is something that we will need to talk about as we go through, but it's not as high a priority to me as the other three items that we've talked about already. In your CIP from twenty sixteen, you did have goals and objectives also associated with your streets, which are again fairly common to cities from the standpoint of the goal that you want to have a street system that's drivable and can handle the traffic. What is more specific is what we need to focus on for Rome. We need to continue to inspect the road surfaces and repair when necessary. You will see that it talked about starting a street seal code program each year, about one and a half percent of the city streets on a continuous basis annually. We are not currently pursuing that option. They also recommended every two, every year that we clean and deepen ditches on each side of the paved streets in order to keep the storm drainage and the culverts clear. We have also not pursued that option. So we would want to prioritize this in later discussions with council as to how we want to slot this in our list of projects. If you'll go to the next slide, please ma'am. I did take your CIP that was updated by Kim Lee Horn and break it out in city streets versus state streets and county streets. Because to me, it's confusing. The holistic document that was in and listed every street had numbers on it that the city was never going to be responsible for paying. And therefore, it creates a false narrative, in my opinion, that this is the city and therefore the residents' responsibility to fund. So let's break it down by really what we have to do versus what the city or the county or state should do. So I talked with Mr. Dominguez and we listed these streets from priority one down to thirteen from the standpoint of what we thought would be important. As the engineer comes through and as we have money to allocate towards street repair, some of this priority may change and may not be necessary. Some of it may also be development dependent and would not come into place unless the development comes in. For instance, if Prairie Point is developed and we can come to an agreement with that, with Fort Starr to install all of those homes, then we will need to look at some of these. Some of these roads will come and be built by them as a result of the development and therefore they will be responsible for that cost. So you can see that most of our streets have culvert or barge configurations. At the time of the study, they recommended or classed most of our streets as high quality, which is certainly something we'd have to look at. Just to be clear and to reiterate some of the discussion from two meetings ago, FM Thirty Four Thirty Three, all of the service roads that go along the highway, Business Two Eighty Seven that goes right through the middle of Rome and BC Rome are not city responsibilities. Those are controlled by Tech Dot. We do not have the authority to go in and make any repairs, adjust striping, change traffic patterns, put up signs or take them down without Tech Dot approval. So we want to make sure that we keep this separate so that it helps people who don't spend all day in local government to understand. Most of our residents, well, frankly, all of our residents have lives outside of the city of Rome. They have things to do. And we need to make sure that the legalese that goes along with local government is broken down into something that they can easily understand and not have to spend two hours analyzing. So by separating out these streets and making those projects separate, I think that helps get people an understanding of where our responsibility lies and where the state's lies. If you will move forward, these are some photos that after I reviewed the presentation that our previous public works director had presented to council, I think two or three years ago, he mentioned several streets that needed to be repaired and or replaced. And I drove those myself to take a look at them. So you will see a couple of pictures here that shows a good example of gatering amongst our streets, which basically it looks like the back of an alligator because people have stopped and started and that basically is pavement failure, is it not, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct.
So I have been told that this requires a complete removal and replacement of the area and the subsurface. I have, as I've said, this is not my area of expertise, but that's some of what I heard from our previous public works presentation and some of what I have gathered from other areas. So this is all in Old Town, both the pictures of these streets. Shayna, if you'll advance. The photo on the left shows how some of the streets have actually had crack seal applied, which helps keeps, helps keep the water and the ice from going underneath the road and causing further deterioration or breakage. And then it gets down into the cracks and it causes more issues with failure or buckling. The photo on the right is actually Moore's Streets, which has been discussed in the past for repair and or replacement. You see, it has significant gatering as well. Would you advance for me, ma'am? This is moving on into streets in Crown Point. Crown Point was developed, I believe, in the late nineties or early two thousands. Do any of you have any other dates for Crown Point? Is that approximately correct?
About the late nineties.
Was it?
Because when we moved in, it was February oh one. It was about the twenty fifth house.
Okay. I was going back and looking at some of our documents and that's about the timeframe that it was showing the development agreement. So I wanted to make sure I was correct. I don't know of any repairs or projects for the roads since then, but it may not just be in my record. So if you all know of something that's been done, I'm happy to take the feedback and add it to our history, but I didn't find anything as of yet.
I had noticed the last time I was down there, just on the backside of Troxel, that there were a couple of places that apparently you guys have repaired. They're very small segments.
When the previous director was here, he had a company come in and patch some road there where you're talking about trucks on the far end.
Yeah.
But if you go down there now, it's, looks like it's just part of the rest of the street.
Well, parts of it are literally crumbling, but it did, I could see where there were, there were a couple of patches that were probably no more than four feet in length that had been patched.
So these photos show some of the areas, as I mentioned, in Crown Point. Crack seal, if it had been applied over the years, would have helped keep some of this buckling and this gatering from occurring. You can see on the picture on the left that we, this may be one of the areas that the mayor was talking about where a section of pavement was removed and replaced and it is also showing some deterioration. The other two are photos of separate locations on Troxel that have had some pavement failure. Shayna, if you'll go to the next one.
Miss DeGee.
Yes, ma'am.
So when this, when the roads start gatering like that, what do you need to do to repair it? Or can you repair it? Do you have to?
It's my understanding you have to tear it out, but.
Yeah, you gotta go like to the foundation again because it's already been intruded. And pretty much your foundation's not setting. You gotta dig it all out and put a new sub foundation and then new layer of asphalt.
And when they built it, they put in their own material and it holds water so it stays soft. And when the trash truck goes through there, any piece of heavy equipment, it starts pumping. When it starts pumping, that's when you get this here. So if you don't fix your subgrade, it doesn't matter how many times you patch it, it's not going to stay. So it's not just a surface issue, it's a subgrade issue.
So looking at this slide, this is actually Alliance Boulevard, the entrance to Viwell. The streets in Viwell are in better condition than this entrance is. And I don't know if this is due to heavy trucks coming in or just because it's the edge of the pavement, but you can see that this area has failed as you are coming into that development. Alliance Boulevard, I did find records that it had been chip sealed in twenty twenty through an agreement with Wise County. You'll also recall that we just chip sealed Ellis, is that right, chief? And that was being completed right when I came on in late twenty twenty two. And Chip Seal is a program that's used by a lot of cities. It's economical, it does help extend the life of the road. It can cause some frustration with residents as it settles because it does have a tendency to throw up rocks a little bit until it actually cements down to the ground, but it is an economical use. So this is actually Iron Horse Court. We've had at least two developers reach out to us. Most people may not realize that this road is a city road and it is in, is our responsibility to repair and maintain. The, there's a couple of pieces of property adjacent to this that is out off One Fourteen on the south side as you're going towards Roanoke that, what's the name of that business that's out there by it? Do you know, mayor? Losner? Losner, it's, it's a trucking type company that's out there. So they have, I've had at least two developers come in and want to put in a business park along this area, but they have both backed out because the roadway is not on any type of a replacement plan or we don't have funding from which to replace it. You will see that this is basically just, what would you call this? Road base that's been put down. It gets. It, it gets, go ahead.
The reason it's, you can see the potholes in it is a, there's two companies that are down there. It's Ratliff Ironworks, M&amp;G Stone, and those trucks, I mean, they're real heavy for the road base, so all the weight causes the potholes. And they were promised a long time ago when they annexed them that they were going to get a concrete road. And they're very frustrated.
Whoever made the promise for a concrete road really put us in a bad situation because heavy trucks, the concrete won't stand up unless you go at least thirteen inches thick. So, you're looking at some money. The chip and seal that, it's not going to hold up. The asphalt it, under those heavy trucks, not going to hold up long.
So, that's, that's an area of challenge as well that we'll need to look at when we're talking holistically the system.
Showing that on Google Maps says County Road forty-eight forty-four. Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to find, I tried to find Iron Horse Court. Is that really a county responsibility and not ours?
It's a city road.
I'm not sure.
All right, so going to the next slide, this is where I broke out the roadways to show what are state or county related projects instead of keeping it all on the one page. The signal light at one fourteen and US two eighty-seven would be the one here by the QT. We've all seen the plans as it relates to the divergent diamond that they have put forward for that intersection, which I think is going to cause a lot of confusion, but that's just my layperson's opinion. The South Main Street Road Repair, State Highway one fourteen and Alliance Boulevard, we would very much like to see the traffic light installed there that we have discussed at some of our recent meetings. We all know that FM thirty-four thirty-three desperately needs some widening, but that is a county road. County Road forty-six fifty-one was on the plan, talked about widening that to three lanes. Ramhorn Hill as well, widening to four lane as a major arterial and Ramhorn Hill to three lane undivided minor arterial. So, moving ahead and looking at development-related projects, these are the ones that I talked to about that if the development comes in, we may want to consider them. There is an extension of Hickory to Future Joy Road, but that's dependent on the Prairie Point and the way they laid that out. Future Joy Road to Future County Road, forty-seven thirty-three, also Prairie Point. And then the Joy Road widening to four lane divided major arterial dependent upon Prairie Point. Those would be paid for by the developer. It's not now. It's, was on the concept plans for Prairie Point and if they install it, I, if the new four star comes for it, I doubt they'll call it Joy Road, they'll call it something else.
And it's my understanding, I mean originally when the developers back when had come to talk about Prairie Point, there was going to be some sort of, if that develops at this point, that traffic seems to me that it would, it's going to come through Crown Point. And I thought that they were discussing at some point having, having an entrance off of one fourteen from there.
That's correct. The main entrance is off of one fourteen. Shayna?
When you said thirty-four thirty-three, you said county road, that's a state road, isn't it?
Either one. It's not ours. FM thirty-four thirty-three?
Yeah.
Farm to market.
Yeah, state. It makes a big difference.
It does, but we're not going to get funding for that any sooner, I don't think either.
Just want to make clarification on that.
So, looking at the master thoroughfare plan, this was included in your last update from Kim Lee Horn. It's difficult to see. I do have larger copies at the office if you would like to look at them, but I'm not so sure that this isn't a little bit dated at this point as well. At some juncture, when we do a comprehensive review of roadways, we'll probably want to have this pulled back out and looked at from the standpoint of mobility. And Mayor, you can see from this that the Crown Point Prairie Point does show access via State Highway one fourteen from the east, so that is still included on that plan. When you go to the next slide, this is just a quick look at what your cross sections would be. So, when it says three lane divided arterial or four lane divided, you can reference this so that it would give you some sort of a street level view of how wide and what that might look like at that area. Go to the next slide, please ma'am. This is a listing of where those streets, excuse me, occur on the capital improvements plan. So, if you have a desire to match the number to the number in the box on the map, that will give you some idea of where that might be. And Mayor, it looks like Joy Road is number fourteen on this particular drawing, which is east of Crown Point, right next to where the, the line is that has the one fourteen number. If you would just go to the left of that, you'll see it. All right, Shayna, if you'll move on to the next slide, please. So, looking at the storm drainage system, as I mentioned, this is an area that was called out in the CIP from 2016. We've talked about the fact that all of our storm water drains into three creeks, which is the West Fork of Trinity River, Derek Creek, or Elizabeth Creek. And let me rephrase that, it's not all of our storm water, it's our surface water. Storm culvert, culverts at street crossings, we have low channels and ditches, and we have four areas in the city that are actually in the FEMA one-year, hundred-year flood plane. The, we don't have a whole lot of curb and gutter, so a lot of that does flow to those creeks. We also have goals and objectives that were put in place for culverts and storm water to manage that. You'll see that goal one is a little bit specific. It talks about eliminating flooding at Morris and Dogwood intersection and the area of the Biwell Estates. I don't know if any of that's been completed. Do you all have any history of that project? It talks about installing two, two culverts, one at Morris and at Dogwood and cleaning grade the ditches as necessary.
Dogwood is up on the hill. Dogwood is up on the hill, so that's what I'm trying to understand, flooding up there. Seems like the flooding occurs at the bottom of Morris and school.
Ashley, the former council member, Ashley Majors had put in a French drain at her house because when it rains, she's just right there. So, when it rains, her whole front yard is just underwater. She'd put in a French drain to try to resolve some of that because it literally got in her house.
That's getting the flow of what's come, running off of Dogwood to go downhill appropriately.
I would say.
Through existing easements.
There is a lot of flooding there on Dogwood, just north of the intersection of Dogwood and Morris. If you go down there when it rains, instead of going through culvert, it goes over the road into people's yards and houses.
There's issues on First Street too, where it just gets to the bottom, where it goes like this. And that one little house, the kid that used, he sold it and he sold it to somebody else and now it's rented, but when it rains, that whole yard is just covered in water.
There's a lot of issue with drainage on Old Town.
So, we don't know that these projects have been implemented, but it's something that we could put a pin in and potentially consider when we get to this particular area. Goal number two is to minimize or eliminate flooding through residential, and it talks about regrading and cleaning out silted areas of town and replacing undersized culverts by at least two deadlines, one in 2020 and one in 2036. We've not done either one of these, so it's something that we'll want to discuss at a later juncture. It also talks about maintaining major drainage structures that release storm water and to replace those culverts. Again, we've not completed any of those tasks. Any questions on storm water? It's not immediate in our conversation, so we're kind of moving through that. All right, so then moving on to the conversation on an overview of the facilities as it relates to the city-owned buildings and, excuse me, what we have that are leased. Two minutes, can you, there you go.
To, if the council and the mayor could be reminded to turn off their microphones.
Thank you. So, we have city-owned buildings that are the community center, which is the one that we're in and it's in use. The senior community building, which is vacant. The police department in use, the fire department in use, public works in use, the old city hall, which is vacant, and the old school, which is vacant. And then we have leased facilities, which is the city hall that we currently occupy for administration. Just by way of note, our lease is up in November of this year for that city hall building. I have reached out to the owner to see if they are interested in continuing the lease for an additional two years and what the amount would be. We are currently paying thirteen hundred and thirty-four dollars a month for that building. Now, it's only eleven hundred square feet, so it is pretty small for a city hall and the needs, but the yearly rent on that facility, at least under the current contract, is sixteen thousand dollars per year. Last time, we paid it two years in advance, and I believe there was a slight discount for doing so. I would like to find out from the owner if they are interested in that type of an arrangement again, as we do not have any city hall building on the horizon, so we've got to have a place to operate out of. Even if council made a decision sometime this year to rehab the old city hall for some reason, we're not going to be in it by November and we need someplace to be. If you look at the current facility that we're in, it's actually been named the Marie Moore Educational Center. Some of these photos are not going to be new to you. You have seen these in person, but the one on the left is actually a picture of the storage that is in the kitchen area. In nineteen eighty-eight, these facilities were abandoned for school use, and that was when Seven Hills Elementary School opened. The city purchased the property from Northwest ISD in nineteen ninety-two, from what I can tell, is just under thirty thousand dollars if our records are correct. So, that was a bargain back then, and we really do have a historical gem on our hands. The building though, may have the original windows or at least the very early version of what was installed. We have leaking issues. It's hard to heat and cool, as you all know, having gone to council meetings in here. As we discussed, above these ceiling tiles, they dropped them down, but there's no insulation above them. So, the air conditioning and the heating just comes and goes out of the building. The bathroom desperately needs an upgrade, and we do have some bids to perform this work, so that's something that I would like to talk to you all about. Shayna, if you advanced the slide one more, please. Oh, I'm sorry, go back. Thank you. The one on the left is actually the storage room that you see here where the HVAC is housed. The one on the right is some of the tiles that have been displaced either from repairs or from animals that have gotten into the building, and that is in the storage that's in the kitchen. If you'll go to the next one, please ma'am. You will see on the left, this is the current restroom. I know that when we have talked about the concept of these buildings before, that we do not have any restroom in our city-owned buildings like this that are ADA compliant. That is a requirement. We are not grandfathered in, even though that has been discussed. You will also see the notation on the right or the photo on the right, that is some of the electrical paneling that is above the toilet for the building. This bathroom is also not weather tight. The window has some corrugated plastic that has been taped in place, and we do get rain come in when it rains pretty hard. So, we need to make some changes to this if this is a building that we want to continue to use and not have it be deteriorated in another several years where we can't use it. If you'll go ahead. This is a picture of the current windows that sit behind you. As I mentioned, these are potentially original with the school. You can see the photo on the left, that the glazing has come apart from the glass at night or late in the day. If you stand in certain areas, you can see between the window franks outside. So, we are not at all energy efficient or even compliant, I would think, for some, for some ways to try and keep our costs down on the air conditioning and the heater. The window, or the picture on the right is another of the window, and that kind of brings us to the concept of if we want to do any rehab on this building, we have gotten some quotes ranging anywhere from forty thousand to a hundred thousand to take this drop ceiling out and do spray foam insulation and paint it black, to take out the heating, the old heating element that exists in here, and to do some other general upkeep to this facility that would make it far more usable for the long term. As you will call, we did have the roof done a few years back, so it is watertight from the roof, but not necessarily in this area. The door behind you doesn't really work well. The bar to push to go out is broken for that emergency exit, so that is not code compliant either. So, these are some things that council might want to look at. If you go to the next one, please ma'am. This is the senior community building that exists here just to my right, your left. This building has been under discussion for some time. We did allocate thirty thousand dollars of ARPA funds to be used for a potential fix to this building. It's been closed for several years or a few years due to potential code violations. We do not have bids yet per se for this repair, but there are some things that we could do in the interim that I would recommend just to make it a little bit more habitable from the standpoint of what's in the kitchen. Shayna, if you go ahead. You will see that the kitchen needs some attention. It would, I think, be a good thing to hire someone to clean this out and to clean out the refrigerators and the old food that's in the pantry. On the left, you will see the current state of the kitchen, which has a lot of utensils and pans and pots and things as it relates to when it was in use for luncheons. On the right, you will see a photo of the hot water heater. This is one of the items we'd need to fix. It's not code compliant, it's not vented well, and it is not raised off the floor. Go to the next slide, please. The slide on the left is actually the pantry from a different angle, and you can see there's considerable amount of canned food that's still in there. I don't know if it's in date, so we would want somebody to check that and dispose of it if it's not. You can also see that there is a bathroom in there while it does have more room from which to maneuver. I don't know that the door is wide enough to be ADA compliant, but they seem to have made it work. So, it may be something on the list that could get fixed or not, but that is just two of the facilities that we have recently talked about doing some work to. That doesn't mean that the other facilities don't need it, but the community voted down the bonds to fix the old school and some of the other buildings that we could use as community focal points. So, that's something that after we deal with the infrastructure, we may want to consider in the future. And since we are not going to consider a wholesale change to facilities, it would be my recommendation to you all that we do some preventative maintenance on the buildings so that they're usable, and they may be usable for another ten years in that regard. I don't, I don't know, but that's something we've got to do to make sure that we still have places for people to be. Shayna, next one, please. Oh, thank you. So, looking at our park system, a lot of people kind of stop with the idea that we have a veterans park and a family park, and those are two jewels in our crown as it relates to the park system for Rome. But we also have a Biwell site, which is a future park of approximately thirty-nine acres, and a Prairie Point site, which is approximately ten acres, that once that development comes online, would actually be a part of our system. Go ahead, ma'am. You will see on the left, this is a picture of the Rome Family Park, and it was established in 2010, and an aerial shot of that same park. This is where we would recommend, if we had some funding, to put some of those sales structures over the equipment so that the kids could use them during the, the heat of the summer. We also talked about the bathrooms as it relates to what Public Works would recommend because we have had, as I said, some residents reach out about the ability to use the bathrooms. We currently keep them locked until someone has made a reservation for the park or is signed up to, to use it. For instance, the Easter event that we just approved, the restrooms will be open for that and we'll get them all prepared, but as you all may recall, we had some vandalism at the park on the water fountain last year. And while I understand that might be a prank, it costs us all money to fix it, and it diminishes the use of the park for everyone. And so, we've got to be responsible in that use, and we might want to consider an alternative for those restrooms at some juncture. Next slide. This is also our, a nice picture of our veterans park. We could consider hosting events for veterans as part of our ongoing discussion as we relate to what events that we want to put on, on behalf of the city, or we would like to sponsor. We did have some feedback last year on some of the veteran-related days like Memorial Day, Veterans Day, July fourth, that we don't have additional flags on site when that event is occurring. I have worked in cities where we have installed systems where you can add flags with the pole, and it's, it's a really pretty thing to see, that I would recommend to. That I would recommend to council that we consider installing those so that we can put the flags out and take them down for those events. And if anybody's visiting the park during that time, it just adds to the tourist and the residential experience. I think we could potentially use our hot motel taxes or our hotel motel taxes to pay for that so it would not come out of our general fund fund balance. But that would be a nice upgrade for the community that could be done to that Veterans Park. Looking ahead, this is the actual footprint of the Bywell system and the approximate thirty-nine acres that we discussed. It's not currently being used as a park, and you can see from the two photos on the left that there is some debris on the property. I don't know if that was on the property when we were deeded it or if that has been placed there thereafter, but it's some... So somebody dumped last year, according to Mr. Dominguez. So we will bear the cost of picking that up and getting rid of it, and we'll need to rehab that before we can ever do anything with it as a park system. Go ahead, Shayna. This arrow will show you the approximately ten acres that exists in the Prairie Point Development Agreement as it stands today that the city would be deeded when that is developed. It's part of the planned development agreement, so it is set to come to us. However, I have talked with the current developers that have come forward, and they are interested in trading the city, those ten acres, for approximately thirty to thirty-two acres that would be adjacent to our current Family Park that would create a nice, much larger park system along... It would run along the railroad track, but it would link both of those together. And that would be really great because we could expand a walking trail for folks. They could start in the Family Park and go all the way onto the thirty acres and come back around. So I'm in negotiations with them. At least currently, the way that our discussions are running is that that development would install and pay for and maintain that thirty-some-odd acres, so the city is not required to pay for that as an ongoing expense. Shayna?
Is there a possibility for ball fields?
Yes, ma'am, we are talking about that. So you also asked us to look at monument signs. We discussed the issue that we had with the Bywell sign and the vandalism that occurred. Excuse me, the bid that we've gotten to acid wash and put the new vinyl letters and install and repaint all of that is about twenty-five hundred dollars. We also requested bids on Ellis, Crown Point, and Chisholm. If we're doing for one, we need to do for the others to some extent. If that's at least for the short run, what we're going to decide. As Rome continues to build out, council's going to have to come to some grips on a policy decision of this because if we get twenty developments, this could get very expensive if the city's maintaining. So when we negotiate additional development agreements with those that are coming in, we need to make sure that developer or that HOA is paying for that sign and not the city. That's really not our responsibility. But because we don't have any clear direction or anything in the development agreements from when these came in, this is something council asked us to look into, and so we've done so. We do have... We do think that if we budgeted this in this year, we would need ten to twenty-five thousand dollars depending upon each site's repair. And I don't mean at each site, I mean total, ten to twenty-five thousand to fix these. We would have to get more serious about creating a bid package for those four to see if we could interest some folks to fixing them. Because they're small projects, we didn't get folks submitting bids on all of them. So we would need to look into that. One thing that we need to be mindful of is the upkeep of those monument signs if we're going to continue to mow around Bywell. That we've had some folks approach, well, why isn't the city then mowing around Ellis and Chisholm and Crown Point? So Mr. Dominguez took a look at that, and it would take an additional three and a half to four hours each week to potentially maintain those, which is... It's an additional cost to the utility fund. Public Works is currently mowing about twenty-eight weeks out of the year, and we have about twenty-seven hundred dollars worth of costs as it relates to fuel and mower repair fees. Doesn't include the purchase of the machines. We've already taken care of that in the last budget. But we will have to come to some sort of a decision on a policy direction if that is something that council wants to do for all the developments. Because currently, we're mowing around Bywell, and we are mowing around the two monument signs for the city.
What are the current labor costs associated with that point?
I don't know that we have it broken down, per se, but it's about twenty-seven hundred dollars for the twenty-eight weeks as we go through.
Do we know why we're mowing around Bywell and not the other ones?
So I did find in a document that I have here that it originally talked about with a previous attorney.
While you're looking for that, I think what Mr. Gann said was it's twenty-seven hundred dollars for the cost of gas and those type of things for the mowing, but that does not include the labor.
I may have left that at the office, but I did find some documentation in some of the meeting minutes where that had been discussed in the past. And... And there was a statement by the attorney at that point in time that because that land was deeded to the city, that it was the city's responsibility to mow it. There was then an ordinance change subsequent that all right-ofways adjacent to a property are maintained by the property owner. Cities do not generally maintain right-ofways. That is just not something that they have the bandwidth to do. So if you own a property that has a culvert and your property line is actually two feet back, you're still required to maintain up to the pavement or back of curb. And that's often misunderstood because people make the assumption that it's the city's right-ofway, therefore you should do it. But that's not how cities have operated. That's not how the laws have been interpreted.
So who owns that property there?
It is my understanding... I'd need to do some more research, but it's my understanding that that was deeded to the city from the standpoint of right-of-way. But it is an entrance off of 114, and it should be a part of the Bywell development. They used to have an HOA, but they dissolved that. And as Phase Two came on, I think some things have kind of gotten lost in the history. So we just, by matter of function, have continued to mow over there.
The ordinance that was passed was homeowners were responsible for essentially eastments, right-ofways, that were actually city-owned, but if it was adjacent to their property. That area, Bywell, seems to me that is an island, and I don't know whose property would be adjacent to that to make them responsible for that.
That would very likely be the woman who owns the property alongside that commercial property, but...
The lady that's trying to sell it right now.
So...
The city used to mow behind my house there off of Sterling. There used to be a road that went back there that went back to the Siptic. And when they put that oil well in, they changed the road so the trucks could get in. And then the city went back or had the farmer go back and tear all that up. And I had it cleaned up, no rocks in it, and I was mowing it. Well, the rocks in it that I had picked up is back. I refused to mow because of that.
So that's a policy question that we'll have to come to some agreement on. You currently have an ordinance that covers that. And like I say, it's not customary for cities to maintain the right-ofways. There's just too many little pockets, and the homeowner has generally, in every city I've worked for, been responsible for that. So one of the other things that we have looked into recently that we've discussed with you all is the idea of an electronic sign at City Hall, which would help us with communications and in talking and conveying things to residents. You will see on the left a mock-up of what that might look like with our current facility. I have, in my email to the building owner, reached out to her and asked if there was an ability for us to install this on the uprights. And you will see on the right, that is a more close-up view of what that might look like for the city of Rome. Now, unfortunately, as with everything else, the last time I priced one of these, the costs have gone up considerably. So when we allocated fifteen thousand dollars in ARPA funds, the real costs are coming in between thirty and forty-seven thousand dollars for that sign. That does seem like a lot, but I will tell you that it makes a difference for the city of Boyd. I know I drive down that road every day, and I can see what's going on in Boyd because they are now putting it out there on their electronic sign when they have events, when they have a water main break, when they have a boil water notice. And it is catching thousands of cars every day with that notification. As we continue to have more of the residents that are using Business 287 to get home, that would catch those residents. Right now, when we have a water main break, we don't even have printed signs that say boil water notice. What we're putting out are handmade, marked signs that they made a couple of years ago that say boil water, but you'll drive right by it and not see that thing. You'll think it's a garage sale sign, and it won't catch your eye. We've got to figure out a better way because we did have some feedback from residents that they didn't know they needed to boil their water because we didn't have a text system. We only put it on Facebook and put it on the website. I don't have emails of all the city residents from which to push something out. We are working on that piece, but I would urge council to look at this as part of their communication package with residents. It's an initial investment, but I do believe this is portable when and if city ever moves from that facility. And up until then, we're going to get a lot of mileage out of everybody who drives up and down that road on both sides who can see what's going on with the city. So it's something that you all are going to have to either allocate additional funds from general fund or decide to abandon altogether because the ARPA money's not going to cover it.
Are there additional ARPA funds that could be allocated?
No, ma'am, we've expended those.
And are we still looking at the communication via text?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we motion now?
I don't believe so. It's not on your agenda for such, but I can certainly put it on the agenda for the twenty seconds. Shayna, next slide, please.
Just curious, though, if we've got such a water and sewer problem. I understand the sign, but why are we spending money there? We should be more water and sewer-minded.
We have a lot of needs. That's the challenge that we're dealing with. And that's been a question that we've been asked before, which is valid. Unfortunately, we don't have enough cash, and I can't cut enough programs to really make a dent in the water sewer. We can certainly reserve these funds, and we can put it towards that program, but fifteen thousand dollars out of what you're seeing up there are millions isn't going to make, in my opinion, quite the impact on the residents as being able to better communicate with them because we've had a lot of feedback from people that our communications are not sufficient.
So are you looking at trying to pass a bond for all of this we're talking about today?
That's at council's decision.
Okay.
I'm presenting the options, and you all will make the decision which way you're going to go. So in talking with our bond counsel and our financial advisor, these are the potential bond projects and funding conditions that may exist if council wants to move forward with a bond election. You do have at your place the sample resolution that would have to be approved today in order to make the bonds or, excuse me, in order to make the agenda for the May fourth election date. It does say Resolution 2024-06 at the top. And as we heard from Mr. Dransfield, you do not have to choose all of these options. I have listed them on there as talking points in case you make the decision for all three of these recommended projects. You can choose one, none, or all three. It's at council's choice. What we would do is if you make the decision, for instance, to put forward Project B and C and not A, then we would simply mark through Proposition A, and then they would true up the paperwork thereafter. But you would have to, excuse me, pass the resolution today in order for us to make the deadlines that we have of the sixteenth to get this on the ballot. You'll see that Proposition A would be improvements to the water well or water infrastructure specific to water well drilling. One of the things that I talked to you about at our meeting on Thursday is we have had a lot of confusion in the past as it relates to bonds and the projects that they're associated with and what they're going to be used for. And we've had some folks question on social media whether or not bonds that have been passed have been used for their intended use. I can tell you that you can't use them for anything else. Those bonds are audited. They are watched over by the Attorney General. And if you expend your funds on something that's not related to that bond, they would already have been at our front door. So we have both broad language as it relates to improvements to water infrastructure. And then I asked the bond attorney to put in specific language. If you will look at Proposition A on the front page, for instance, it said, "Shall the City Council of the City of Rome, Texas, be authorized to issue general obligation bonds of the city in the principal amount of whatever number is necessary for that that you would decide on for constructing, improving, and extending the city's water system?" That is broad. Then we added the two-wit, which basically is legal terminology that specifies that they would be used for drilling, constructing, and improving water wells and the acquisition of land and rights-of-way necessary, et cetera, et cetera. So that specifies that Proposition A would be not only improving the water system itself, but specifically to drill wells. And as I mentioned, it's seven-hundred-and-fifty roughly thousand per well. That price may go up by the time we have the election and get it going, but those are the going rates that I've gotten from opportunity recently. So you see an amount on there of two and a half to three million dollars depending upon how many, if at all, the engineering and design costs, and then the base cost of drilling the well and all of the infrastructure that goes with it. So if council makes that decision, you would want to put in that blank either between two and a half to three million dollars, knowing that if you put three million and you only need two, you don't issue for the full three, you only issue for the two. But you cannot put two million and then go up to three. You have... It's just like the tax rate. You can set a maximum amount, and you can spend less. But you can't set a low amount and spend more. So we have to be very specific as to what we're doing in order to convey clearly what's going on with these bonds and the decisions that are being made. You will see that Proposition B would be constructing, improving, and extending the water or, excuse me, the city sewer system, which is specific for the West Plant, which, as you see on your OPCs, ranges from four-point-three million now to eleven million versus the one-point-eight to eight million that it used to be.
So when the speaker, I don't remember his name, that he spoke to us on Thursday evening, something that he said was if it was voted down, then we could not issue certificates of obligation for another three years for that item.
Correct. So council has some choices here. You can go straight for certificates of obligation, and you can move forward with those, knowing that, just like the tax rate, they'll probably be protested and force an election. That's what happened the last time. Then you have to go to election in November. If they're not voted in, all these costs are just going to continue. You're going to have, again, deferred maintenance and deterioration, and you're going to have cost escalation so that it just keeps costing more money as we go along.
Right, so nothing happens. But if we don't include, for instance, so Proposition B, and I'm looking at the slide, not the resolution, but it says West Water Treatment Plant repairs and replacements. So if we didn't include repairs and the bond failed, if we were to proceed, the bond failed for replacement, then could we still issue certificates of obligation for repairs?
That's a great question. I would need to call Kristen. She is on standby for us if we need to consult with her on that. And I added the repairs and replacement because that's the difference in the cost. So the repairs, the very basic minimum, is going to cost the four-point-three million dollars at least. The replacement is closer to the eleven million dollar cost.
Hey, I just have a question. It's going to go back to the funding topic. And this is not my original idea. It was actually an idea that was Mr. Loftus and I had discussed some time ago about privatizing public-private partnership. And I made a couple of calls and made some inquiries, and I don't have any definitive because, of course, you can't do anything without council. However, privatizing the West Side or actually our... However, privatizing the West Side or actually our wastewater operation, basically a company would come in, they would buy our assets as far as the, as far as what we had. They would do any whatever upgrades or if they needed to do new, they would buy the, the system from us. And they would do the upgrades, whatever was necessary. I know there's some drawbacks. There's drawbacks on everything. But I, I don't know that that's not an option that we couldn't consider. I came across some information that Mr. Loftus had given me some time ago and it was basically if you privatize it, you get the tax money off of it and then there's an additional incentive because it's ownership. We would have some control over the rates. It's not as if we just, you know, sell it and we're giving away the store. But I, I don't know that considering the amount of money that we're looking at, that it wouldn't be advisable or, you know, wise to, to look at that option as well.
I think we're under a time constraint and if we don't do something now, I, I'm concerned about kicking the can down the road.
And I remember somebody talking about privatizing and it seemed like we, as the citizens, might be paying a lot more for water and wastewater.
That's not necessarily so. It would take some exploration. However, by the time you do the bond and run it through, you know, the time that it would take to, you know, because you are on, on considerable time constraints because you're talking about having to get it out in less than a week. And it's my understanding that we do have to have an audit and we don't have the audit yet from 2023.
We've already discussed this. That is correct and it should be ready by the end of March, well before the bonds are issued or even the election is called.
All right. I'm just suggesting to the council that you look into the option rather than just jumping off the cliff and we've got to have all this money.
I would suggest that we do all of the above because even if the bond issue passes, we still have the election not to spend that money if we as council decide that. So I think it's an all of the above approach. We go ahead, get the bond issue on the ballot and then perhaps consider if privatization is an option, I think it's worth looking into. We owe that to our citizens, I think.
We can certainly, excuse me, do all of the above, but this is not a jump off the cliff. This is something that's been discussed for many, many years and nothing has occurred as of yet. So somebody's got to make a decision. Because as I stated and as Mr. Loftus discussed, if we keep going down the path we're going, at some point Rome will cease to exist. You will be annexed by Fort Worth or some other city and you will not have any care and control over what goes on in your own community.
Rome jumped off the cliff 10 or 20 years ago.
With the bonds too, you're, you're looking at like the one that was passed in 2019. That was for the expansion for the East Side Plant. And we're looking at 40 years on that. I believe for the first two years, all we paid was interest on it. That's a 40-year note. By the time that note expires, it will have been obsolete probably twice over. And I think that that's probably what we're going to run into with an extended bond. But like I said, that's just.
I don't, I don't agree with that. We, we just spent that money on the East Side wastewater plant and were able to expand that plant. So it's not like that plant is just going to go away. As long as we maintain it and keep it in good working order, we can expand it. We, we did do that where we planned for growth and the developers will be paying for it if the developers come in. So I don't think that that's going to be obsolete. I think that that's a good move on our, on our part.
But the West Side did become obsolete. It became obsolete a number of years ago.
We picked the wrong plant that couldn't be expanded.
That was a council decision in 2019 to do that.
No ma'am, that wasn't. 2019 is the East Plant. The West Plant was put in in 1999. That decision was made long before any of these folks or you were on council.
But the East Side was expanded when, actually it was probably the West Side that should have taken the priority at the time.
Well, I agree with that, but the developer wasn't interested in partnering with the city on the West Plant. They were looking at Prairie Point and that is what caused the East Plant to get its upgrade.
Mr. Gang, can we talk about the bond, the language and how we move forward with the motion? Do we have to be specific in, for the motion? I'm prepared to move forward in talking about that, but I don't know how to move and if the language that the motion is, is the language of the bond exactly.
Let me pull up, give me just a minute to pull up the email from Kristen and I'll see if she gave me language for that. From what I understand from her, excuse me, it would simply be a motion to approve Resolution 2024-06, 06 including Proposition whatever, A, B, or C with an amount included.
Do, do we need to make a, make a motion to approve the resolution calling a bond election?
Yes.
Okay.
But through that end, we would first have to decide on which of these three projects and what number you want to put in the blank.
We need all three.
Would the language on Proposition A, would that also include connecting with other water sources if they were available? Okay. That's what I'm concerned about.
That would not be applicable for drilling the wells. That's just self-contained within our system. If we are looking at a secondary water source, either through New Fairview and their efforts or the regional efforts, that's going to be a whole different conversation.
So this part of it where it says extending the city's water system would not include that?
It extends it from the standpoint of drilling additional wells and expanding or extending our capacity to pull groundwater up.
These figures do have the, what did you say, the bond processing fees, the ones that are on this line? What kind of fees were you talking about earlier? $80,000 for something?
Engineering and the design costs. If we look at the OPCs as it relates to, I see engineering in the OPC on option number one, but not design. So I would need to take just a moment and configure that.
Will we potentially have the need for additional administrative staff to manage the dealing with these bonds, issuance and administration?
No, we have a financial attorney and we have a financial advisor that would tend to all of this for us.
I mean, I would say that we, we make a motion to approve all three of them at the highest level because we don't necessarily need that amount. I mean, if it's not 3 million, we can issue the 2.5 or whatever.
I would just need a minute to verify the numbers. I don't want to give you something that's not got the design costs in it because those could be substantial.
And also the term of the bonds, obviously it's asking for the maximum term. And, you know, if for some reason we found it advantageous to go to 20-year terms, something like that, that'd be an option also.
Correct. It works the same as the amount that you put in. You want to list the longest and you can pull it forward. Yes.
Do we need to take a five-minute break so that you can put some numbers?
If you would let me call Kristen, our, our bond attorney, that would be helpful.
Are we ready to move forward?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So, in talking with our financial attorney, she discussed the fact that generally they have other things built into these as well, which is a contingency cost for inflation, the cost of issuance, the attorney fees, and I did also reach our engineer, and he stated that there is 2% built into these OPCs for bond issuance. Generally, you pay for the cost to issue the bonds out of this issuance, not out of your general fund. There is also a contingency that's built into this for 25% to deal with any cost escalations that may occur, and the engineering and design fees at 10% are built in. So, he suggested that potentially, we would look at if, say, council went for option one on the West Plant, it shows at roughly 4.249, then you might want to round up to 4.5, just to make sure that you have enough monies for whatever you are going to do, because the financial attorney said that they are having many clients come back, and the amount they went to bond for is not covering all the costs, and so she wanted to be mindful of that.
Would it not just be best to round up to five?
It's, that's a council decision, but we'd want to be very clear with residents, so they know that if it doesn't come in at that, we're not going to issue all of that. I don't, I don't want people to have the wrong impression, but that would certainly be a council decision, and we'd need to know which direction you want to go on the West Plant, because there's three options.
So, option B, that 11 million is rounded up, because it's at 10.3 on the sheet.
That would be option C, and we might want to round that up to 11 million. So, yes, that is rounded up.
Okay, so if we, I don't know if we have something like this for A and C?
No, ma'am, that's why I've got the spread. I would, the bid on the INI came in at 3 million, that's why I have it listed at 3.5, just to round up, and the same thing with the wells, I would recommend the 3 million, just in case, and then we would come down from there.
So, the 11 million does have the fees all, and the extra 25% and all of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution calling a bond election for Proposition A at 3 million, Proposition B at 11 million, and Proposition C at 3.5 million.
Could you state the resolution number for me, please?
Resolution number 2024-06.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second that.
So, there's a motion on the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, council. This, I know, is a very heavy lift, and it's a hard decision for you all to make. I do think that as we go through this process and we educate the community, we can get into some of the financial numbers with them to make sure that they're clear on what all these are going to be used for, how it's going to be used, and the state of the condition of the utility fund.
Yeah, and I'd like to point out that there are two bonds, correct, that are, that are rolling off, so this would almost be like it's a substitution, but I don't know exactly if it's going to be a wash.
Correct. There will be some capacity that we will gain in, by the end of this year and into next fiscal year, where those two bonds roll off, and one thing that is important to note, that if these bonds are issued in 2024, we won't actually have a payment due until approximately six to 12 months thereafter. So, both of those should have had a chance to roll off before we are required to start paying on the new bonds, so that will help considerably on what any impact would be to the residents, and I do believe Mr. Loftus would like to talk about bond committee members and how we move forward with educating folks, and that would be something that I think that that bond committee could have some factual papers that they could talk from.
Before you move on to the next bullet item there on your slides, I'd just like to say thank you, Amanda and your team, for everything that you've done to put together and do all the legwork and provide the history. I know it's hard when you're having to go back so many years and figure out why things haven't happened, what's happened, and trying to fill in the blanks, and so we're just appreciative, appreciative of that, and I would also like to thank this council for their vision, for their willingness to stand up for something and to move forward and take action. Appreciate each of you.
Thank you. Now, I understand Ms. King has to step out. If I could have two or three minutes to call our bond attorney, I want to make sure I cross all the Ts and dotted the Is before we move on to the next subject. There is also lunch in the back for you, it's build your own burger, so if you'd like to take advantage of that while we've got the five minutes, we're going to have a working lunch, you can bring it back in here.
Well, when we get back, before we start up, I need to go back to the roads, so I'd like to do that when we get back.
This conference will now be recorded.
So, can you advance to, I'm sorry, ma'am, you were also firing EMS goals? So, as part of our conversation, as you saw earlier, we also had the fire and EMS team put together their goals and projects for both the immediate needs and what we would see in the future, and so they have listed that there are still some repairs on the existing station that they would need to see, or would like to see done. They would also like to apply for a SAFER grant for staffing costs within the next two months. A SAFER grant allows us to add firefighters where they are paid for, for a period of time, I believe it's three years, Chief, and during that time, we're able to have them on staff, but the city is not required to fund their pay for that time, and then we fold it into the budget at the end of that three years, is that correct? So, if we are fortunate enough to obtain a SAFER grant, then that would really help us out financially and allow us to get some additional protection and folks on shift. Within the next three to five years, we will have to consider facility needs overall as a community. In three or to five years, Rome is going to look very different than it looks today. As I've mentioned to you multiple times over many of the meetings that I speak to developers regularly, they are looking at this as the crossroads to the metroplex, if you will, and these highways as the gateway into Wise County, because we are on the southern tip of pretty much everything to getting in here unless you're coming out of Denton to a great degree. So, with the Walden Group expanding, the North Star closer to Rome, that's going to further push additional folks out here, and the, I've had inquiries from other developers for the property the other side of Prairie Point as well, so we could be looking at becoming a home rule city within the next three years, from the standpoint of going from 1,900 residents to over 5,000. That's not unheard of. So, we will definitely have to do something about facilities and firefighters and staffing, because all of these folks are going to expect a level of service that's different than what we're providing today. So, we also have listed on here the purchase of new apparatus, we do have a slide pertaining to that, so I'll wait until we get there to have that conversation. You'll go to the next one, please, ma'am. The fire and EMS needs as it relates to equipment, there's a thermal imager that they would like to purchase potentially in fiscal year 2025, two of those, and one in 2026. There is a multi-gas detector, one in '25, one in '26, and one in '27, potentially. Now, of course, delaying those is going to cause the cost to change, but we're at least providing some sort of a baseline of what we think the price per unit is now versus when we would need that, and I apologize, that last column should say total, not FY2029. They would like to have a second set of extrication tools to be purchased in FY26. They need flashlights, 12 of them, in the next fiscal year and six thereafter, in order to work easier on scene when they are out with fire events at night. They'd also like to have a generator with scene light, so they could put that in place whenever they have a major accident and it's after hours, but you see, that is at least requested in '27. A Life PAC 1512 lead requested in the next fiscal year, and a Lucas CPR in the year thereafter, for a total, at least if we were to price it all today, of about $125,000 in equipment costs for our current set of staff members. Next slide, please, ma'am. One of the things that we are also going to have to take into consideration is the age of our current engines and our apparatus that we have within the fire system. You will see that Engine 217 was actually manufactured in 2003, I believe we purchased that used, I believe we've purchased most all of our equipment used, which is not unusual. You will see that Engine 217 should have had a frontier, frontline life of 15 years, to be out of service as a backup in 2018, but here we are in 2024, still using it in the frontline, so it has gone well beyond its normal use period for a fire engine. Engine 317 was manufactured in 2009, should be coming out of frontline use this year, and then going into reserve this year for five years, and then being replaced and retired in 2029. Brush truck 217 in 2000, and you can see the dates thereafter. Rescue 117, manufactured in 2013, so it is still got some life left in it through 2028 as a frontline use, and then would be moved to reserve in five years. Brush truck 217 is the new one that we just received through the grant process, so it will stay in frontline use for a considerable amount of time until 2037, then go into reserve for five years, and wouldn't need to retire until 2043. At some point, based on the type of businesses that come in and the needs in this area, we are going to want to consider a ladder truck. We're not there yet, that's why it says TBD, but one of these things that I would like to get on council's radar is the idea of putting into our budget document what's called an unfunded, under discussion capital program. So, you don't want to lose sight of the things that you know the community is eventually going to need, but you also don't want to give the impression that it's going to immediately be funded, because that's not necessarily true. So, we, for instance, would move the ladder truck to a unfunded, under discussion notation, and show that 10 or 15 years out, so that we keep it in front of us, so councils that come after you know that that may be a need of the community, but it's not an immediate need, if that makes some sense. Any questions on that? Any questions on that? Chief, anything you'd like to add?
On the ladder truck, right now, the range of getting a ladder truck is 18 months to two and a half. They've gone from a million dollars to about almost $2 million over the past year and a half, two years. So the sooner you have one starting to be built, which I see us needing one here within three years, the better off we are. You'll put a down payment on one. I don't even know what that that is, the total cost for that. But you'll have to put so much money down to have it built. So you'll have that price secured at that time because it does take two years to build. So that's something to think about probably next budget year to actually start putting in a ladder truck or purchase two years from them.
And what about an engine comfort?
An engine we need now. I mean, I've got 317 in the shop, our tanker that's got 3,000 gallons. Cost of it to get it out is $10,400. It's a turbo. They're not even making them right now. So they're searching the world right now for a turbo. So we're out of service for that. So we're in our engine that should be in retirement right now. We're running out of it, which has a cracked tank. So we can't hold as much water in it right now because it all leaks in the bay during comes into the offices. So.
And what are the prices for those, for the?
Price for an engine today, right now, if we get a Spartan 94, which is the lower end of an engine, but it's actually a good engine because doesn't have all the bells and whistles on it that I don't like. I like plain and simple that works. It's around $650,000 to $800,000 for an engine right now. And that's spec'd out with the equipment on it that we need to run it. Last year, at this same time, a year ago, that same engine was 543. So it just tells you the difference in how much it goes up each year.
Do you know the difference between the Spartan and say a Pierce or something?
Yeah, the Spartan that I've been looking at, a Pierce is going to be about 1.1 for an engine, which I don't see spending a million dollars on something that is going to be used as a big pool box. I just don't see that.
On the ladder truck? On your ladder truck, have you looked at used ones?
I hadn't even put that in my mind because if you get a used one, five years from now, you're going to have to retire it. Buy another one. It's going to be three, three and a half million dollars instead of a million and a half to two million.
Yeah.
I just, just don't see the point in buying used anymore. It is with the growth of this city, it just doesn't make sense. Because we're going to be in repairs like we are. We spent over $30,000 the last three years on engine 317. So almost $100,000 in three years we spent repairing it.
Now, my experience.
Try this one.
Yeah.
Now, my experience in my career has always been with volunteer fire departments. I know they're constantly looking for grants, just like we all are, I guess. But is there any possibility of that type of funding?
I've been looking into grants. They don't grow on trees. I mean, they just don't. And you got to meet certain specifications for grants. There is one that we could take, 217, we could, I think we've discussed this before. You have to drill a hole in the block so that it's no longer used as an engine. You still get to keep the engine so you can scrap it for the cost of the metal, like, you know, take it out to a junkyard, scrap it, maybe get 10, 15, $20,000 out of it. It's through the cog. It's with their green air, clean air act. So you get a better biodiesel engine than what this one is. So yeah, you can do that. You can probably get maybe $100,000 to $200,000 for that engine through the clean air act. And I've been looking into that, but we hadn't really discussed buying an engine. So it's kind of like just on the back burner until we actually get serious about getting one.
But would you have to do that prior to getting the grant then?
No, 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 no. You, you get approved for the grant, and then you have to show proof that you have either shot a hole through it, drilled a hole through it, whatever. You have to destroy the block so it can never be used again.
That's a good question. I thought, well, if you do that, then you have nothing. Any other questions for chief before we move into the police world? Okay, Shayna, if you'll move forward. So we did the same thing on the police department side, and you will see that there are still some repairs on that station that need to be done. They would also like to have a computer aided dispatch system in the next 12 to 18 months, as well as a records management system. We talked about this briefly in previous meetings. We've also talked about the possibility of implementing a motor patrol program. I would recommend that we look into that, given how many accidents that we have and given how much highway, et cetera. That is not a hard decision, I don't, in my opinion, for council to make because it does benefit the community tremendously and it is generally budget neutral. So that is something that we may want to consider either mid-year or certainly with the upcoming budget year, whether we want to try something along that line. In three to five years, construction of a new police station, this is kind of our larger view of facilities overall. They are wanting to organize the property room and clean out the PD bays within the next 12 months. I know some of that work has already begun. They'd also like to pursue recognition or accreditation in the next one to three years. Create in-service schedule for new hires and secure, as you know, a long-term dispatch solution, which some of that has been enhanced with the system upgrades at the county level. And I would imagine some of the direction that we go will depend on the elections for sheriff. So we'll need to wait and see how a lot of that works out. Next slide, please. Looking at the police department's needs as it relates to vehicles, chief has listed several here that would either need to be purchased, rotated out as we go through. One of the things that he recommended is because of the growth of the department and the community itself, that we might consider a leasing program for vehicles. That's often an economical way for cities to rotate their rolling stock so that they're not investing or dropping a lot of money into that initially. So it's something to consider. Next slide, please. Looking at police equipment, that computer aided dispatch, it looks like I didn't get to the end of these slides. There's only 96 of them, so surprising that it fell off. The body worn camera system to replace that current system, chief, when were you thinking of that?
The current system we have now is watch guard and it's, we experienced a lot of issues with it. I was on the phone with Fulcrum recently. They recommend as soon as possible moving away from watch guard because of the complete unreliability of the system. And as you know, body worn cameras and in-car camera systems are essential for modern policing because we want the protection to, of having everything, every, all our interactions recorded. We are looking at, we just applied for a grant. It would be a one-to-one grant, meaning however much we put it in would be reimbursed. Now, it's going to be highly competitive and we may not get selected, but we've asked, right now, a full system, off the top of my head, I think for body worn cameras and in-car systems was about $120,000, which would be for five years. Not 120,000 a year for five years. That would be for a five-year program, 120,000. And if we got that grant, we would get 60 from the state. So we could get a five-year solution for 60,000 instead of 120. We can limp this system along that we have. It's just very unreliable.
Is that Axon?
Yes, we would transition to Axon. That's who we have our tasers with currently.
The problem with the current body cameras, are they like a proprietary system in this case? It makes it so hard to work with?
Yes, you can't switch out from one system to another. And this system isn't cloud-based. It's a server in our PD. And if you've seen the computer situation in our PD, it's not ideal. And there is no backup.
And say with Axon, I know that it is a cloud-based system, so you could be at home and possibly logging into somebody's Axon system to see what's going on, if there's some sort of major event going on, correct?
If we choose that, that level of sophistication, yes. A supervisor can log in and literally see real time what the officer is seeing from his camera.
That's an upgrade.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and when I first started looking into this, because we have had problems with our system for the time I've been here. They sent me a quote that was substantially higher than 120,000 for the entire thing. And I immediately said, no, we can't do this. And he goes, well, let me pare it down for you. And that's when they got rid of things like that and went to the basic system, which would allow us to do our job. It just wouldn't give us those extra things like that.
The quality of video is just so much more better.
Yeah, my, my current agency, right before I retired from there, they, they transitioned from mobile vision to watch, to Axon. And just the, the, especially late at night, nighttime video is difficult without ambient lighting. And Axon is fantastic in low light situations. If you notice when you watch, if you, I don't know, if you watch YouTube videos on, on police interactions, a lot of agencies now are going with Axon because of the quality of this system.
What'd you stop me for? On a serious note, you're talking about leasing cars. Is there a mileage on the lease or do they count away that being squad cars?
So they put a mileage on it and once it reaches that mileage, they switch out the car. Yeah. So basically instead of, and I don't know the numbers, so I can't quote that. I do know several cities that I could talk to. We were fortunate when I first got here, or at least last year, you guys approved four new vehicles for us and we were able to put those into service, which substantially limited the number of miles we were putting on our vehicles. Because up until that time, we were doing what's called hot seating, which means the officer uses it from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And sometimes the next officer, he would hop out and that officer would hop in that same car and drive it from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So you're basically running a car for 24 hours straight. Not ideal for an engine, not ideal for upkeep and maintenance. And so our maintenance costs are very high on our older cars. We did implement, we did put those four new vehicles into service, which will lower that substantially. We don't need cars until, I think, at least 2025. But as you guys know from that former decision, it takes a year and a half to two years to get a vehicle. Once you've committed to it and signed the contract. In that meantime, instead of, instead of committing, say, 80,000 per vehicle for each new vehicle that you put into service and a replacement vehicle, if you can get a lease for less than that, then everything comes turnkey. You, they bring the car in, you drive it for however many years or however many miles they want you to, and then they switch it out with a new car and you pay for a vehicle. So we would look into that. We would, we would investigate that option to see what's, what's more cost effective for the city.
Are you pretty much being a new car all the time?
Yes, you don't have a car that's six, eight, 10 years old like we, well, some, most of our cars aren't that old, but you run into that situation where you have a car with 130, 140, 150,000 miles on it. Which if it's a, you know, I don't have a problem driving my personal vehicles that because I'm just commuting or driving to the store or whatnot. But I, I hesitate to have an officer out on the highway doing 135 miles an hour in a vehicle that is old and maybe not in great repair. So that's why, that's why police vehicles are replaced when they are. One thing that leasing I've, I've been told is really optimal for us is they track the service on it. So at any point in time, you can look up and compare each vehicle. When was the oil changed? How far did the tires change? What maintenance has been done to it? And you can see a trend if an officer is abusing their vehicle or maintaining their vehicle very well, you can recognize that as well.
So if we do go with the lease and they bring in a new one, is it ready to go with lights, sirens, radio and everything? Or are you going to be down a few months getting all that put in?
Well, because of the way it's done, we would keep the, the car that's going out of service, we would keep that in service until the new one arrived. The way I understand it, they don't use old parts. They bring in new.
But when the car gets here, is it ready to go?
That I don't know. I, I don't know if, if it's, it's a police package Tahoe or whatever you choose. But I don't know if it comes with the equipment already on it or if we send it to, say, Defender to be outfitted. But those questions will be, you know, answered long before we ever made a decision.
What impact does the take-home policy for officers and, I mean, various employees? What impact does the take-home policy have on the miles that are accrued on these vehicles?
That's a great question. One of the biggest impacts on take-home, could you, one of the biggest impacts that the take-home vehicle has, at least a lot of departments are going to take home vehicles for all their officers because it's a very low-cost way of recruiting and retaining employees. If you compare our, our pay rates with those of our neighboring communities and certainly those of the metroplex were substantially lower than those other agencies. So if we ever do get to the point where we could offer that, that would be a great way to reward the employees for the work that they do. And it's very limited in the amount of money that it, that it puts on the budget compared to what it costs to hire and retain an employee.
But the, still, it accrues the miles. That's what, that's what my question was, the impact that the additional miles has on the use of the vehicles.
Yes. So when you write a policy, you would put a limit on the number of miles they can go from the station where they live. That's why if you notice in our parking lot and the parking lot here for Chief Estes, you have, I don't know, 10 or so Fort Worth police cars here. Because that's as far as they're allowed to take their vehicles. And so they live in paradise or Decatur, but they can't go that far. A take-home policy for law enforcement is typically it's 25 miles or 35 miles as the crow flies, as we say. And if you, if you add that up, 50 miles a day, they work, they work six days every 12, every, or seven days every 14. So you're looking at maybe 250 miles, you know, every, every few, few weeks, I think. So it's limited in, when you do the cost benefit analysis, I think it's a win, I think it's a no-brainer to, to do that. Okay. So yes, the other two. Computer aided dispatch. I will say, when I first came to Rome, a lot of things took me by surprise. One of the biggest was the fact that we don't have a computer aided dispatch. For those that don't understand what that means or what this, what this does is, and I, and I'm used to agencies, this, this has been around since the, since the eighties, computer aided dispatch. What that means is when the officer is dispatched to a call, let's say they get, you know, a, a meat complainant at 123 Main Street. When the dispatcher sends them to that call, then they look at their computer in their car and all of the notes are there. The complainant, the address they're going to, the phone number, and then the call notes. The complainant wants to talk to the officer about this. So the, so the radio traffic is very short. Meat complainant went to the main street and then he just hits a, he hits a button on his, on his computer that says, I'm en route. And then when he gets there, he pushes a button that says, I'm on the scene. It's very, it's very, it's very quick and easy and all of the information is there for him to see. We don't have that. The city of Rome does not have a computer aided dispatch. What we have is anything that the dispatcher tells us over the radio. So basically, they get dispatched to a meat complainant at 123 Main Street. And then the only information they get is the information that the dispatcher gives them over the radio. And at that point, they have to stop their car and if, write it down or just try to commit it to memory while they're making their way over there. So you can imagine if it's, let's not say it's a meat complainant. Let's say it's a, we had a call the other night. It was, it was a domestic disturbance that was violent in nature. As the officer's going, he's amped up, his adrenaline's going, his, 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 his heart rate's racing. And he's trying to, what we call script and practice on the way to this call. So imagine trying to do all this. You're, you're driving your police car. You're, you're going pretty quick. You're trying to get there to help these people. Your, your heart rate's racing. You have, you have tunnel vision. You have audio exclusion. You've got time dilation, all these things that physiologically affect us as we're going to. to these calls. And then on top of that, you have no reference of what you see. You don't know what the call notes are, you have to ask the dispatcher if you're not sure what, what, what you've heard. And I will tell you, a lot of the information's, I'm going to qualify, sometimes we get information that isn't, it's not exactly accurate. And so then you factor all these things in and they're reliant on what they hear instead of what they can see and, and know for a fact it's on their computer. Again, I didn't know agencies didn't have dispatch until I got here. It took me by surprise, but I, I knew by the booking of the budget that it wasn't something that, at least former councils were willing to contemplate going with. When I first got here, one of the very first questions that was posed to me was, do you want radios or do you want cars? You can't have both. And I immediately said radios because that's an officer safety issue. This is a big officer safety issue, but we're, we're tied right now. And the biggest thing we're going to have to do with this is you'll see on there also is on the, on the previous screen is we want to come up with a long-term dispatch solution. Again, depending upon the election, whether we want to pay Wise County for dispatch or if we want to exercise other options or look into other options for a dispatch, that's who we, whoever we would go with is who we would use that same computer-aid dispatch because we want to be on the same system, whether it's one, one solution or Tyler Technologies or whatever they were using, so it would all communicate and interact together. That would be my biggest need as far as equipment. The body worn camera, we will do, you know, if we get that, if we get that, that grant, then I will bring it to you and say, is this something y'all would like us to do? Lasers, we will implement those as we build the agency and that's the same thing with patrol rifles. We are currently getting everyone through patrol rifle school. You've seen the, the news reports where we're outgunned when we go to some of these calls. I don't ever want my officers to not have the equipment they need that would keep them or somebody else safe. I think we learned from Nashville that when you do it the right way and you respond to a call like that with a long gun, that, that you're trained and, and ready to use, it makes a big difference in the saving of lives. And, and my officers are willing and ready to, to, to put them, themselves on the line, but it's my job as the chief administrator to make sure they have the equipment and the training to do so. Right now, the only officers that carry rifles are the ones that go out and buy them on their own. I would like to, handguns are, I'm, I'm not a big fan of departmentation handguns because I've seen people shoot really well with a Glock and then I've seen them shoot really well with a Kimber and I've seen them shoot really well with a, you know, with an H and K. And I think you should shoot a handgun that you're really qualified, you know, you're really competent with. But a rifle is a rifle is a rifle. I think there's very few differences and if you can shoot Colt LA 6940, you can also shoot, you know, any other, you know, Rock River or whatever. So I would want to standardize that in the future.
I know the answer to the question I'm fixing to ask, but some people may not. They're going to say, well, he's got a pistol on his hip, why does he need a rifle?
So a pistol, just the, the ballistics of a pistol. I consider myself a fairly competent shot. I'm not a, I'm not a, a award-winning competition shooter, but I've always passed my qualifying with 100. I just, I'm blessed that way, I could just shoot pretty well. If I come through that door, I can probably hit somebody standing on that wall, but over that, it's just going to be luck. Anything over about 20, 25 yards with a pistol, it's just downright luck. But with a rifle, give me 100 yards in iron sights and you don't have a chance. Does that make sense?
That's to me, I was just asking, you know, for people that, that don't know.
Yeah. It's the distance. Let's say you walk into Chisholm Trail Middle School, they have a hallway that's 80 yards long. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be lucky to hit somebody at 80 yards and if they have a rifle, I can't get any closer without really just giving myself up. But with a rifle, they don't have a chance.
Any other questions for Chief Davis? So then we're going to move into the administration goals and projects that we brainstormed as a group from City Hall. One of the things that we've recently looked into and we've talked to you all about briefly as it relates to our current software that we have for finance is the limitations that existed when we made the decision to go with our current vendor, STW, was supposed to transition to OpenGov and go into the cloud. And when they transitioned to OpenGov, it was supposed to have a lot of the newer, easier to track, easier to operate, bells and whistles for lack of a better term, on the financial system. Well, when OpenGov finally finished their purchase of STW, they realized that they were not going to be able to transfer STW customers onto OpenGov. And so they're maintaining STW, but they're not enhancing the software at all. It does not function in the cloud. So all of our financials exist on our current server at City Hall. They are intermittently backed up to an external server, but we prefer to have real-time information on our finances. So we have looked at the potential of going back to a, a software company that we had in the past called FundView. It also will do, do court and utility billing, so it all integrates together, which would be great. One of the things that I liked particularly about the utility billing piece, and Shayna, you're welcome to jump in on this because we all went through the demonstration, is right now Julie spends a significant amount of time hand, well, printing and hand stamping, putting the stamp on all of the water bills. This utility billing software would handle that for her and that would take at least two days a month out of her work world where she could do something that's actually productive. But because we're on STW and we have that older system, it doesn't do that. So it's something to consider as we move forward, if that's an investment that we'd like to make. You may recall that we had allocated about $135,000 of ARPA money to the transition from OpenGov or from STW to OpenGov. And when they realized that that was not going to be possible, we did get a refund and we reallocated those ARPA funds to something else. So we did not pay the 135 that we thought we were going to pay for it. We were, we got about half of that back and then you've, you've put it to other projects. So we did see some savings in that regard, but that would be something that would be quite nice if all of our systems talked to each other because right now we've got STW for finance and some for utility billing. We've got a different software for court and so it's, it's not all cohesive. We are going to continue to complete the document scanning and the shredding process. That's been invaluable to us to find the historical documents as it relates to the city and give us an understanding of where we've come from and where we potentially could go. We'd like to create a bad debt collection policy as it relates to water and utility billing. We have some old accounts that we don't have a policy currently in place and so they're not collectible and we need to get them off the books. So that's something that we will be looking at over the next 12 months. One thing I'd like to look at as well is creating some sort of an outline of an economic development program that we can put out there for potential investors or folks who are looking to come to Rome. We don't have that. I, I've actually got folks that come forward and they want to know, well, what about a tax break? Well, I don't have a tax break to give you. The taxes in Rome are already lower than any of our surrounding cities and so you're already getting a supplement through your ad valorem rate because if you want to go to Boyd, it's twice what we have here, almost. So I'd like to get some sort of a formalized program together that I could give to potential developers or they could look at on our website, which I think would help inform folks who are coming to this city to potentially invest with their business. There's a couple of other items that council may want to consider at some point. You all know that with our sales tax, we're sending a half a cent to Wise County every year on what we are allocated in our two cents. And that is countywide. It does help keep the taxes in Wise County lower, but we're also subsidizing not only our residence rate, but everyone else who lives in the county. It would probably be something that has to be a countywide vote to make that decision, but that is something that you all may want to consider. One thing I did not put on this list that I think would also be something that you should think about is we have a half a cent that also goes to property tax reduction. And while in theory that's good, it does not give us that extra half cent, which is significant from the standpoint of our general fund, to be able to fund operations the day-to-day. And so currently, your tax bill, and I've not looked at one for Rome because I, I don't have direct access to that through their website, but in my previous city, when we had property tax reduction and the county issued the property tax notice, it would say at the bottom, your taxes have been lowered by X amount due to local election for property tax reduction. I know that Boyd had that and they eliminated their PTR and they moved it into that municipal development district and they are using that to recruit people, businesses, et cetera, to Boyd. They are also using that money to enhance their park system, to put on events, to do other things of that nature. So if council ever made that decision, then we could reallocate those funds either into general fund for operations or to some sort of a municipal development district that would help us with those. You can also reallocate that half cent to roadways. So if you took it out of your sales and use tax and actually put it into road repair and infrastructure, you could accumulate some funds in that as well to deal with some things that the city needs to have done. That is one of those options. And it would be beneficial if we did that now before we grow considerably. So something else to think about. We're also looking at the regional water and wastewater options. I'll be happy to add the privatization conversation that Ms. Mitchell brought up and discuss that as we go through this process. I'd be a little concerned just from my own personal experience with what I know we pay for Walnut Creek per thousand gallons of water versus what we can get it out of the ground for, it is at least five times higher. I would be concerned about losing control of the pricing structure and I know that the mayor mentioned that we would have some input on that. I don't know how that works and that would be something I'd need to find out from whoever may want to purchase our system, if we can even find a buyer. We don't have that many hookups to the wax plant, so I don't know how financially advantageous that would be. Yes, sir?
Going back to the one we just got off of, I don't know, half cent, what average is that that you save per household?
I'd have to look at that. I'd need somebody to, I'd like to get a copy of somebody's tax bill if they're willing to provide it and I don't care if you mark out your name, but I just need to see if it's being printed on there. Since I don't live in Rome, I don't get one of those. But I'd need to do some calculations to see what we might be able to fund for roadways. So I'd need to bring that back to you at, at another meeting.
So it would be more than $100?
Oh, yeah. Well, I don't know the impact to an average home, I'd need to look at that because I don't know what's going in from sales and use. It's not like just calculating your ad valorem rate. So I'd need to do a little bit of math behind it and then I could bring it to you later.
Okay.
This is something that would have to go to the voters either this election or in November?
I think we have enough on the ballot this election.
Yeah.
Go to the next slide. All right, so looking then at paid personnel that we have that's currently on staff, you can see that we have about 23 and a half people that are paid. The municipal court shows 1.5 because the judge is generally considered part-time, but he doesn't get a part-time salary. He charges X amount per docket and I believe we pay him roughly $900 a month, is that correct? So that's not a half of a person, so I want to be sure that we're clear on that. If you'll go to the next slide, ma'am, we did some rough figuring and this is something that we'll continue to flesh out as your next budget cycle comes around. You will see that we had some numbers dropped in from the police department that they need a patrol sergeant and they really need it now, but they have it shown in FY '25 and two, additional sergeants potentially in '27, four officers in '26. So all of these numbers, we're pulling together because we want to create this as part of our financial forecasting system. It will help the council to make the decisions on how to allocate the resources that we are entrusted with when we know how many employees are going to be needed to serve the community. You'll see, I don't have public works in here yet because we were too busy, we were really focusing on all of that other information, so we need to finish building that. The utility billing and administration, I think the ladies at City Hall would say we need that now, but I don't have a place to put someone. So we're going to have to have some conversations about what we're thinking. The code enforcement officer is one that would be very beneficial to us. We might even have the possibility to partner with the city of Aurora to fund one full-time and have them reimburse us, much like the police contract where they would subsidize that position. But we have a lot of code compliance complaints and we don't have a person in that position. So if that's something that council wanted to consider mid-year, I can certainly put that together and you can make that decision. I could also reach out to Aurora and see if they want to partner with us on that particular position that would benefit their community because I don't know that we have enough to keep someone in busy full-time, but I think between the two communities, we would have enough to keep them busy full-time. So that's something to think about. And the Safer Grant, as you see from the firefighter hirings, if that comes in, even if it doesn't, we're going to have to have some conversation because the fact that this community, even the size that it is, is protected only by one person on shift and the chief is really below anywhere we need to be.
Are we full up on the full-time firefighters?
Right now, we have one per shift. So we're covered 24/7, 365 right now by one person. I normally run pretty much all the calls at night with them if it's a major call. If it's over a medical, if it's a wreck or it's a structural fire, I will always go out on them. Since I'm three minutes away, I respond all the time with them because it's just safety factors, especially on a highway. Even at night, medicals, we go out to the middle of nowhere, walk up 100 yards up to a trailer in the middle of nowhere, you don't know what's up there. And I do not like them being by themselves, but I'm not going to run every single call at night, medicals with them. So I run a lot, but not everyone. So it's a safety factor.
Would that be also a situation where maybe PD would go with you or no?
It's out in the county.
Oh, it's county.
It's in our ETJ. So that's where most of our medicals are at night is out in ETJ, that or Hotel Six. And we run a lot to North Star now.
And so we have volunteers, but they don't normally go on calls at night?
No, it depends on what they're doing. I mean, some of them are there, but they can't do a lot because they're not certified yet. They will all hopefully by April, May, take their TCFP and have their EMT. Not saying that we're retaining them because they're all looking for full-time jobs somewhere. So we're basically putting them through academy, getting a little bit of service out of them during that time and then most of them are probably going to leave us to go somewhere bigger and better. Now, the Safer Grant will pay three years 100% if we get that. So for three years, we'll have 100% paid three people. Yeah, so our goal is to have three people per shift in three years, the minimum of three years, and then the fourth year, have a fourth and have a minimum manning of three per shift. That way, one person calls in sick, we still meet minimum. Or if one person goes to training, we still have minimum. That's, that's the goal for the next three or four years.
Is the city able to recoup any of the costs associated with calls that, like you said, North Star, calls that occur outside of the city limits that are in the ETJ? Do we have any means of recouping any of that?
That's where we get our Wise County taxes and our Tarrant County taxes, or not taxes, but our revenue.
Well, I know they had the 53,000 from the Wise County, just every department gets that. Do we get something also out of Tarrant?
Yes.
I see. Anybody know how much that is?
9,000, 9,000 I think. Because we run, we run less calls over there, now we are making more because of North Star.
Yeah.
We're making a lot, lot more calls than we now.
So it runs into a lot of money.
But the thing is going out to Tarrant County, sometimes we call the fires outside of, way on the other side over there. So when we only have one person, we have nobody covering our city. And that's any of our ETJ. I mean, we go out, we have nobody here but me, maybe.
Are that amounts $8,000?
So in the contract, it says that we will respond to those ETJ areas in Tarrant County and in Wise County.
That's correct.
Thing I would like to consider is a renegotiation of the Tarrant County, considering how close they're coming out to us with so many more homes. I think that's something Chief and I ought to explore, looking at that eight thousand dollars is not sufficient.
We, we average about eight hundred and fifty calls a year, and I expect this year we're probably going to hit a thousand, just because of the always going in and out.
How close is their nearest fire station to North Star?
They're in a mud district, so Fort Worth has up to twenty years to take it back over, but they won't do it. I mean, they'll put that off, they'll kick that down the road as far as they can. So I expect we'll have it another fifteen to twenty years covering their area over there.
Where is their station, their closest station?
Oh, to North Star, probably Hasslet or the one station, Hasslet that have the EST. I know the chief, it's an actual fire station.
Because of the way the railroad tracks go. And one of them is a volunteer, one of them is paid for, Hasslet, and then he said they also have the EST for their EMS service. That's now what, that's what the mayor told me, the Hasslet mayor.
I've never heard of EST in Tarrant County. I don't know anything about that. They have a station, I think it's forty-three or whatever, right there off where you go down 287, 35 meet, over where the apartments are, they built that new station. So that's the closest Fort Worth, because Hasslet, the chief, Chief Mays just signed a contract with them. They're going to start running calls with Fort Worth Fire Department from Hasslet.
If Fort Worth doesn't respond out there in North Star?
If there's a structural fire, they will, but medicals and all the other stuff that we run on domestics, no, they don't run on those at all.
Okay, I thought they, we were the only ones running fire, but they are running out.
They will, because they'll come mutually to us over there. So it'll be Hasslet, Hasslet, Rome and Fort Worth if we get a structural fire with North Star.
Okay, and then my next question is, how often can you put in for that three-year paid-for fireman? Every three years, four years?
That I couldn't tell you. I don't know how often that goes. I just know a lot of bigger cities, even like South Lake got one for twelve personnel. And kind of, I'm trying to think of how that works with people that have the actual money to pay for firefighters, actually get a safer grant where we're sitting here, don't have the money for firefighters, and it's hard for us to get a safer grant. So I'm not really sure how that works. So I'm trying to dig into it and find the intricate details of how you can make yourself more sellable with the safer grant.
Okay, I didn't know, maybe you could run three years, and then at the end of the three, yeah, yeah, do it again?
I'm sure you can put in as measurable. It just depends on how you're going to get it, because not every, there's a lot of people put in for safer grants. It used to be a five-year deal. They've cut it down to three years now, at a hundred percent.
And so after the three years, we would either have to budget those three firefighters, or they're going to lose their jobs?
That's correct. It has to be budgeted at that three years. But I would say three years from now, there's no, I would assume that we would have the tax base to support that.
But in three years, you've got a fifty-fifty chance that they're going to go somewhere else?
If the pay's not there, yeah, they will. The reason why we have some people come here and want to stay here is because the quality of the, I hate to say quality of the calls, because that's bad. The type of calls we have, out of the eight hundred and fifty we have, we probably eighty to ninety percent of those are actually calls worth value to a firefighter. That's why they get in this business. You go to Westlake or South Lake, they run, you know, like, South Lake runs three thousand calls. Probably fifty percent of those are worth anything compared to what we do. They get more experience than Rome than they do anywhere else, because the highways and the structural fires would make.
Well, that brings me to the end of my presentation. However, I do know that Mr. Johnson wanted to circle back around to roadways, and Mr. Loftus has a conversation about a bond committee that he would like to talk about. So do we want to start with roads and then come back to the bond committee?
I got another question, though. On the police officers, the twenty-six and twenty-seven, you're looking at a total of six more officers added?
So if you look at that, four officers, and then two additional, let me see, right now, we, no, the two officers would be, that was actually, I think, in fiscal year twenty-five, two of those would be the motorcycle officers, the motor unit, two of that would be motor unit. So no, I'm only looking for four additional patrol officers. Right now, we have four patrol officers. So we have one officer on duty at a time. We have one patrol sergeant, and what I would like to do is, later this year or next year, add one patrol sergeant. So I've got mirror, and I've got a sergeant here every day. Right now, we don't have that. When Sergeant Ritchie is off duty, and if he goes on his three days off, and an officer does something on that day before he leaves, that's not reviewed and taken care of until four days later, unless I step in and do it, or ask my CID sergeant to step in and do it. And then he's doing things that the patrol sergeant should be doing and not doing the things he should be doing. So by adding one patrol sergeant, what that does is it keeps us from getting behind. As an example for that, so y'all saw in the paper, we had, we made an arrest this week. Those officers went on their days off following that arrest, but it was an arrest that needed to be taken care of before the weekend. And so I had the sergeant come back in and paid him overtime to make sure it was buttoned up, if you will, before we needed to turn that over to other agencies. So by having another sergeant that is here when Sergeant Ritchie is not, we won't have that issue. We will have more coverage, and they can provide the supervisor coverage that you really need with officers. And then the four officers would add it. If we add four officers, what that gives me is two per shift, that's a huge benefit. We would still keep minimum of one, but right now, if somebody goes on training, I pay overtime. If somebody goes on vacation, I pay overtime. If somebody calls in sick, I pay overtime. By having somebody else on that shift, you won't pay overtime. You can minimize that, you can lower it substantially by not having to pay somebody to cover that, because we take pride in doing it for ourselves here in Rome.
So it's kind of like getting a second guy for half price?
It can be looked at that way, yes.
What I was getting at was circling back to the squad cars. If you get that, you'll need more squad cars, correct?
Yes, and that's actually, that is in the squad car part, where it says adding patrol vehicles. I'm adding one for each officer that comes in. And agencies that look forward that far and are that aggressive in planning for the future, pay huge dividends if you don't do that. Because right now, I think we can, we can have a car last roughly ten years if only one officer is driving it, or one officer is responsible for it. If you start hot seating cars, you're looking at three, maybe four years, and then you're going to have to turn it over. And so you get a much longer life expectancy. And so if you buy six cars now for ninety thousand each, that's a lot cheaper than six, you know, three cars at ninety, and then three more years. We need three more at ninety-five, and then three more at a hundred and ten. I mean, the longer you put these things off, the more it costs. So my job as your chief is to try to plan for the future. Now, if y'all say, hey, we don't have the money and we can't afford this, I totally understand that. We can't afford new officers, we don't get new officers. We don't get new officers, we don't get new cars. It's just a math game.
But that's leading to the next question. We've already discussed, if you lease your cars, it's got getting two for one?
I don't know yet. I haven't, I haven't done enough homework on leasing, because we're set right now with vehicles. The city where I live leases their patrol vehicles, so I can certainly get a lot of information from them. I've talked to them a little bit about it, not about the numbers, but about the benefits of it, and that is the benefit of it.
Your maintenance would go down driving a number of vehicles. You wouldn't have to worry about your officer out late at night breaking down in a high-mollet vehicle.
This sounds all true, yes, sir.
Could you also explain the hourly, how they work? They're not at an eighty-hour pay?
That's true. So our officers work twelve-hour shifts. So they work eighty-four hours every two weeks. The four hours, the eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, is not overtime. That's paid at their standard rate. It's, it's a, it's a barely standard deck. I guess it's an exception to their rule of paying overtime. You can, you can work up to eighty-four without paying overtime. So when you see, when you see Irving PD says they pay their officers a hundred and five, after five years, their patrol officer tops out at a hundred and five thousand dollars a year. That's on an eighty-hour schedule. When we post for an officer at fifty-five thousand to fifty-nine thousand, that's on an eighty-four hour schedule. So really, if you were to do apples to apples, their five-year officer is going to make a hundred and five, and if we have our officer work eighty, our five-year officer is going to make sixty or sixty-two or something.
Irving and Rome are comparable.
Well, when you start comparing agencies, in what manner do you mean comparable? Do you mean, do you mean recruitment of officers?
I would imagine the environment, number one, the environment, that wouldn't be number one. Number one would be the cost, the cost evaluation on it, because I would imagine that Irving probably has a tax base of close to two hundred million, and at least a hundred and forty-five.
Tax base is not germane to what you pay your officer. It's what can you recruit them for, and what-
Your environment's different.
The environment may or may not be different, but they're still answering the same type of calls.
I just, I just don't see that the two are comparable. Irving is considerably different than Rome. I mean, they have-
Okay, so, and that's a-
That's where I would disagree.
That's a fair point, Mayor. So let me bring it closer to home. So if we're not going to compare with our agencies that are within driving distance to our, would be our south, let's talk about north. So Decatur right now has a pay scale. They have a pay plan with, it's called a step plan. So when you're hired by the city of Decatur, and they pay more than us right now, when you're hired in there, you can, you will know what you're going to make in the next, every year for the next, I think it's a ten-year plan. So they're hired in at sixty, they know next year they'll make sixty-four, the next year they'll make sixty-seven, the next year, and I'm just, these are just numbers I'm setting out there. We don't have a step plan. It's something maybe the mayor would like to look into for us, which might help us recruit. We don't have that. Right now, we just hire you at this, and then if you get a raise, we'll see what we can do if we have the money to give you a raise. So the officers, so for us to recruit, we can't put a big salary out there. We can't put a step plan out there. We can't say we have great facilities and all this equipment. We create a culture that people want to come work, work in. But this would help if we could do these things, budget willing.
Yes, the only problem is, these other cities are within driving distance of us, and if we, if they want to go get ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty thousand dollars more, they just drive to the next city. So our pool of applicants go down exponentially, because they're going to cities right down the street. Boyd is paying more than we are. So I think that that is an important part of that, to get qualified first responders, firefighters also.
Yeah, this, this is a great conversation to have, and I love to have it. The mayor brought up take-home vehicles earlier. The city of Boyd, which I think we all love to compare ourselves to, their officers take their cars home. Like, right now, the only officers that take ours home are the sergeants that are on call. The officers that are working are allowed to take their vehicle home when they're going to return to work the next day. Mayor, if that's something you'd like us to look into, I'd be happy to do that, because that would really help us with recruiting and retention. Is that something you might be interested in?
Taking the vehicles home? No, I've been, I think it's an extra liability for the city when we have vehicles that are taken home. So I would not be a good participant with that.
Okay, step plan? Would you be interested in a step plan?
That I would have to think about. I look at things as, on an overall basis, and, you know, I also look at things as to our tax base and our median income, and I think we've only got one city employee that is average with our median income in the city, because we're looking at taxpayers at a median income of about seventy-eight thousand dollars to finance and fund salaries that they don't make. And that's where I'm coming from with that. And I know that everyone's got an argument where we've got to do this because we've got to be competitive, and we've got to do this because we've got to be competitive. And I understand that. However, you know, our taxpayers, their resources are finite. They're not just, and there's, as far as I know, we only have one city employee that would, because you take a median salary, say of seventy-eight thousand, that means your, your two house, two people in the household, they're making thirty-nine thousand. And so our taxpayers, like I said, for the most part, are funding salaries that far exceed what they're making in their own homes. So, you know, we could argue, we could argue this point for the rest of the afternoon, and you all are going to do what you want to do, and the council's going to approve it, and I have very little input, and I understand that.
Madam Mayor, I'm not, I'm not arguing with me. I think this is great dialogue, and great discussion. If, I will, I will put this out there to anybody listening. If you work in the city of Rome and you are qualified to be a police officer, please put in an application. We'd love to hire you if you think we're making a bunch of money to go out there. I will tell you that Sergeant Ritchie, when he was Officer Ritchie, he was shot in the line of duty making twenty-three dollars an hour on a, on an eighty-four hour schedule. If you're willing to come do that with us, I'd love to have you on the team if you qualify. I see what you're saying, but to the point of tax rate, we are one of four cities in the, in the county of Wise that are full-service cities, police, fire, and public works, and our tax rate is thirty-three percent lower than those other cities. And if this, if this rollback passes at the election, we'll actually be fifty percent lower than the other cities that are, that we are competing against for employees, and competing against for development, and competing against to become a better city. I am very proud of what we have built over there on a very limited budget, regardless of what you think it is, but I could not be prouder of the guys that, and the females that have come and worked for us, and the things we've built, and the things we've done in the last ten and a half years. I'll put it up against anybody in this county for what we've done, for what we've had to work with.
Thank you, Chief. That was very well stated. Council have any other questions about this, Mr. Johnson?
Oh, not about that. I was going to go to the road. Earlier, when we took a break, I went and spoke with my boss. You got on the city project Pioneer Road. That's not ours, not for the city of Rome. It's page twenty-nine, and it's line number five. Fairview's fixing, I'll take all of it. If you're looking at the bottom little left-hand corner, it's number fifty-eight.
Yes, sir. We printed one slide per page instead of two for you guys, so give us just a second.
It's, it's slide fifty-eight, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Loftus, are you wanting to put your bond committee on the twenty-second conversation?
I think it might be a better fit at this time with more attendance.
Excellent. Well, I don't have anything else to present to council. If there's any questions that we can clear up, we're happy to do so.
So the, all the issues with the storage tanks and all that stuff, when are we going to actually discuss that and do something about it?
So it's my understanding in talking to our GovCap representative that we can enter into a contractual obligation to fix those, and we can finance that out through GovCap. I need to do a little bit more research. I talked to her on Friday afternoon. I met with her at a city manager's meeting in Decatur about two weeks ago, and she circled back around. So if you will give me a little bit of time to get some more options from her as to what that looks like, that will help me provide you with more correct information so you can make a better decision.
And so with, like, well, four and well, five that say they need immediate attention, is that going to be part of this bond? Or do we need to direct you into doing something? Or are you just going to go ahead and do it?
Well, I won't go ahead and do it because it's not funded in the budget. And so I would have to have council authority from which to expend it. But you will recall that in our FY '22 audit, we had revenues that exceeded expenditure by hundreds of thousands. So we do have some cash on hand to take care of some of these projects. And I would like to catch my breath and figure out what we could cash fund from the standpoint of some of the questions that Mr. Johnson asked, that do we have some capacity from which to pay for these based on sales and use tax that has come in and that has been in excess of what we anticipated? As of now, the numbers that I look at for the FY '23, I expect in excess of revenues over expenditures as well. So I know when I came on the job here, one of the things that I heard from a multitude of folks is that Rome is broke and we can't do anything. That's not proving to be a true statement. We've, we've either not expended or we didn't know what we had to expend. And now that we do have some understanding, we need to finish out that cycle of business to figure out where do our, where's our money at? What can we put it toward? And once I get that done, yes, I would bring that to council for you all to make that decision to either cash fund or go through a long-term repayment option through a company sort of like GovCap.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to get at. Are you doing some research and then you're going to bring it back? We don't have to tell you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. And I would say that applies to the equipment requests on here as well that are of immediate need.
That's where I was thinking in terms of all the tank repairs. I think a temporary tank was mentioned. And that seems like something that would be a long-term, long-term use object during the maintenance.
So one thing that has been brought to our attention by our engineer that Mr. Dominguez just reminded me of is because of that emergency preparedness plan that we submitted to the state for the generators at FM 34 and 33 in Bobo, we do have to have some direction on what we are going to do for those because the state is actively pursuing our response, for lack of a better word. And that's $100,000 per site for a total of 200,000. So I could contact the GovCap representative and find out what might exist for us. I do know that we probably have that cash on hand that we could cash fund it, but then it limits some of our other options for equipment and other things. So it'd really be a council direction.
So we want, we want her to research that and come back with numbers that we can kind of look at?
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask, what's the lead time on ordering a generator? You know?
That I do not know, but it's going to be three sites. It's going to be the two generators for 100,000 each at Bobo in the hill. And then we got to do a transfer switches at the well sites with the generator. This is more or less, I wouldn't say it is a requirement. I mean, that's, that beyond the point. But I just don't know the turnaround time on anything like that. Yeah.
That, that will be coming back to us at a future meeting sooner than later?
We will shoot for the 22nd. It may be the first meeting in March by the time we get responses from the vendors. But at one of those twos, I would expect to have some information for you. Any other questions from council?
Okay. So what about since, since we have the possible clay pipes being replaced with the bond? Do we, I know that you said that you needed a camera to, to kind of research all that stuff. I mean, that's going to be the very beginning of us mapping out where, what we need to replace. I just feel like a camera is important for them to, to look at those pipes.
I agree with you. What I need to do is, I need to get with our audit team and find out what we have fund balance wise in utility fund. I have spent most of my time looking at general fund fund balance, so I don't feel confident quoting what is in reserves and utility fund at the moment. So I would need some time to find out.
Okay.
Do we have a motion? Do you want future agenda items? We know that we've got the bond committee on there. Anything else? I mean, it's, we're going on five hours here.
I think that was planned for.
I was figuring eight hours. But before, before I make the motion to adjourn if we're through, I just want to say thank you to the four of y'all for doing everything you've done with what we've had to work with. Appreciate it. And I make the motion with adjourn.
I second and thank y'all.
Thank you.